I will call it a order, the October 19th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Start with the pledge, Commissioner Langford.
Please join us in pledging allegiance to our flag and touch to your right and to your right to the Constitution. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present, with the exception of Chair Elmore and Vice Chair Rosine, who are excused this evening.
All right. My first meeting, please bear with me, have a little patience as Chair, I appreciate it. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments at this time? On non-agenda items? See none? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Secretary Harris, there are no requests for continuance.
Thank you. Moving on to consent items. Item number one, minutes of the September 21st, 2023 meeting. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the September 21st meeting? Commission? Call for motion? Vote approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits.
Second.
Call for vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Public hearing items. Item number two, the Champions Club Staff Approval Appeal, PA 2023-38, at 11:07 and 1171 Jamboree Road. Staff, David, presentation, please.
Yes. Good evening, thank you, Secretary Harris, and good evening to the Planning Commission. My name is David Lee, Senior Planner. This is an appeal of the Champions Club staff approval, which was a staff approval to allow a new operator to operate a tennis facility at an existing tennis club and prohibited pickleball use at the club. This is the project location, as you can see in red. The project site includes six tennis courts, which are existing, as well as a 72-space onsite parking lot. It is owned in common with the Hyatt Hotel, which is to the west. There is the Harbor Cove Residential Community to the north, and across Jamboree to the east is the Sea Island Apartments. Just to give some background, in 1973, the Planning Commission approved Use Permit Number 1697, which authorized a private tennis club, known as John Wayne Tennis Club at the time, that's been highlighted in yellow on the map. This use permit authorized 16 lighted tennis courts, an 8100-square-foot tennis clubhouse, and a 78-space onsite parking lot. It was a single tennis operation on two separate parcels, which were previously owned in common by the Irvine Company. As you can see on the map, parcel one is to the north and parcel two to the south. I want to note that all the parking spaces are located on parcel two, and at the time of the approval, were intended for tennis courts on both parcels, since it was one single club. In 1992, the Irvine Company sold parcels one and two to two separate property owners. Parcel two is now owned in common with the adjacent Hyatt Hotel, which I mentioned earlier. The club remained under a single operator, which is the Palisades Tennis Club, with new name, until the recent expiration of a lease agreement with the Hyatt Hotel on parcel two. That leaves the Palisades Club on parcel one. In August of 2023, the Champions Club entered into a lease agreement to operate a tennis club on parcel two. You can see that in green. So with the staff approval, the proposed configuration is for Palisades to operate on parcel one to the north with 10 courts and the existing clubhouse, and the Champions Club to operate on parcel two with six courts to the south. And again, parcel two includes the parking lot. So on August 3rd, 2023, the staff approval was issued and approved by the Community Development Director, which authorized the Champions Club to operate a tennis facility only on parcel two. The Community Development Director found substantial conformance with the use permit. There was a condition that was included to provide parking for the Palisades Club and a condition that prohibited pickleball use on the tennis facility for Champions Club. On August 14th, 2023, the appeal was filed, which is why we're here tonight with this item. So staff does find substantial conformance with the use permit, as the proposed Champions Club is within the hours of operation that was conditioned by the use permit, provides a total of 78 parking spaces, 72 onsite and six offsite on the Hyatt lot, and again is tennis use, which was permitted by the use permit. There's no pickleball allowed by conditions of approval. Just want to go over some of the findings that staff made for the staff approval. First is that it is consistent with the Parks and Recreation Land Use zoning, as well as the use permit for tennis play and instruction on existing tennis courts. It provides the 78 parking spaces dedicated to tennis club use. Since there's no construction proposed, there's no change to the findings of the Environmental Impact Report, which was originally prepared for the tennis club in 1973. And finally, it's compliant with all the conditions of approval of the use permit, plus additional conditions from the staff approval, which I will highlight a few of the notable ones here. First, condition number three, conditions that all the spaces in parcel two are dedicated to tennis club use, and a total or minimum of 78 spaces are dedicated between parcel two and the hotel site for tennis club use. Condition four is a condition about coordination with the Hyatt Hotel during special events to avoid parking issues. Condition five is for the members of the Champions Club to access restrooms at the Hyatt Hotel, since they are no longer able to access the existing clubhouse. And finally, condition six, no pickleball activities of any kind within the tennis clubs are allowed unless an amendment is approved. I want to take some time to respond to the original appeal letter that was submitted by the appellant and discuss some of the points. First, staff does believe that the Director's decision proceeded in a manner that was required by law. Staff believes that the staff approval was the appropriate action and provided required findings. Staff approval does not require a public hearing per the municipal code, and therefore staff did not have a public hearing. And this ultimately does not authorize a new use, development, or a change of use. It authorized a new operator to operate tennis, which is an existing approved use. Second, the Director's decision was not an abuse of discretion and is supported by the evidence. Again, required findings are addressed, and they are in the draft resolution attached to the staff report. Staff believes that the staff approval complies with CEQA, it's consistent with the EIR, which was approved with the use permit. There's no physical development or changes proposed with the staff approval. Staff believes that the Class 1 exemption is appropriate, as there's no expansion of the former use on this facility. And again, there's a very clear prohibition of pickleball use at the club without further amendments. The staff approval complies with the Coastal Act, there's no new development. Staff believes that the requirement for a coastal development permit is not applicable, since there's no development occurring in the coastal zone. Staff did receive an additional letter from the appellant this week, and so I wanted to take some time to address some of the major concerns that were brought up in the letter. First, does the staff approval seal off club amenities? And the answer from staff is no, because parking is provided to both clubs, subject to a lease agreement. And also, again, Palisades will continue to have access to the clubhouse with restrooms, and Champions Club has access to the Hyatt Hotel restrooms. So staff believes that they do still have access to necessary amenities. Second question is, is the staff approval a first step towards pickleball? Again, there's a condition of approval specifically prohibiting pickleball use of any kind. An amendment to the use permit would be required, and a separate process that would come before the Planning Commission, and a totally separate application to be reviewed. And currently, there is no application for further development, including pickleball, that has been submitted to the city. So the answer from staff is no. Third, does the easement rights include parking? Staff believes that the answer is no, as the easement is for access to the Palisades Club, which is being provided through the existing drive aisle. Therefore, members can drive through and go in that loop and drop members off, or provide a drive aisle for emergency vehicles, but it does not need to provide parking. And finally, does the use permit obligate the Hyatt to provide parking to the Palisades? Staff believes no. However, parking is being provided to both clubs, subject to a lease agreement on parcel two. And finally, the use permit from 1973 does not require Hyatt's parking lot to be leased at any specific parking rate. So staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the review exempt from CEQA Class 1, and adopt the resolution upholding the action of the Director and approving the staff approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Lowry?
Yeah, in respect to condition three in the approval resolution, if that was approved, with the parking, so the lease agreement, I guess, for parking is to be determined, correct? It's not in place?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, there's really no allocation, is there an allocation of parking? Is that all subject to the lease agreement? There's nothing that, at least in terms of planning, or at least the current use, and I guess I could have dug in this a little bit more, but that would require Palisades to have so many parking spaces within the 72 that are there now. I mean, in other words, that the number of parking spaces that are allocated to Palisades is just specifically within the agreement between the parties? Or is there anything that the city would require that so many spaces allocated just to Palisades?
Correct. There's no specific allocation in the condition of approval, and the original use permit did not allocate those spaces as well as it's, it was for the, you know, both parcels.
For both?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, staff?
Commissioner? Regarding, again, condition number three, when it's conditioning essentially the Champions Club to provide adequate parking to the Palisades Tennis Club on parcel one, how is that enforceable? And if you require them to provide it at any rental rate, how's that a, I don't understand really, how would that work functionally?
Yeah, it's, it is subject to the condition, they're going to need to strike that lease agreement to park in that parcel two per the approved plans. However, if there's no lease agreement, I believe staff would need to analyze a new, you know, an alternative parking, parking plan from the Palisades Club, so.
So for instance, the Palisades wasn't able to come to terms with the landowner, then this use permit wouldn't be satisfied with, in the conditions?
We believe that because they're offering the right to park there with an agreement, that they have the opportunity to park in parcel two. However, there's also, the condition doesn't limit it only to parcel two. They could park on the Hyatt lot as well, as you can see in the language. It's a combination of parcel two plus the Hyatt lot. So in that case, if Hyatt does, currently they're allowing them to park in, like, the self-parking lot or something like that, that would be an alternative that can happen.
Okay. And could you describe a little bit, one of the letters that came in described the idea of CEQA piecemealing. How does that apply specifically in relation to this Class 1 exemption, knowing that we've got emails saying that they plan on converting it to pickleball, so that there's, we know there's additional requests coming? How does piecemealing work in that evaluation?
I might take a crack at that one. First of all, this application is for tennis and tennis only. I think to speculate that there's a future application, you know, we really don't have to do CEQA on that type of an application. Now, we do understand that the applicant may want to do pickleball in the future, but this application has no bearing on that, meaning this doesn't open the door and then automatically allow pickleball in some future fashion the way that it's established. And so we feel that, you know, the CEQA review for what's in front of us, which is tennis, is perfectly acceptable, and that if pickleball were to be requested by the applicant or anyone in that respect, we would have to evaluate that for consistency with the use permit, and quite possibly do an amended use permit and a coastal development permit for the increased intensity. And that application isn't in front of us here, and that application would be subject to CEQA in that review, and it would come before the Planning Commission at a future date, if the application is filed. And again, it hasn't been filed.
And I understand that. I guess what I'm more generally asking, because it was brought up in one of the correspondences, and I was curious, how does piecemealing work at a general level in relation to CEQA?
So in terms of piecemealing, how we typically analyze it is if a future or different project is dependent upon an existing project, then we would call that piecemealing. In this case, this project can go forward exclusively without pickleball, and so I would not, I would not consider this piecemealing.
Thanks, that's exactly it, yeah. And then, one other question that came up in correspondence was regarding special events. You want to just address that briefly? Specifically, the number of special events per year in relation to the use permit?
Sure. Now, right, the application doesn't request any change to those conditions of approval, so those conditions in the current permit would still apply. We did apply a special condition here on the staff approval to make sure that whatever special events that were to occur would be coordinated with Hyatt, because then that's how the original permit was structured, in that the overflow parking for tournaments or some special event would happen at the larger Hyatt lot nearby. And so we just simply required that they coordinate that event. Now, how the two tennis clubs would share those privileges is not something that the staff approval addresses.
Thanks.
Question again regarding this, condition number three. It appears a little strange in that we're conditioning them to provide the parking, but it's subject to a lease. There's nothing that requires the Hyatt to, you know, give a reasonable lease. They could be as unreasonable as they want to be. Clearly, they're showing some indication to that they, you know, are going to exercise their rights to keep Palisades folks off. Is there a way to tie the approval of the Champions Club and the operation of those six tennis courts with an agreement on the parking with Palisades? Or is that something for us to discuss, or is there a way to condition it, or?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to hear the public comment, hear the applicant, hear the appellant, and so forth, and we can certainly, from this discussion, digest that and come up with something if that's what the commission chooses.
When did the lease expire, do you know? Parcel two? Palisades?
Yes, Secretary Harris, I believe the lease expired in March of 2022, so over a year ago.
There was one question on one of the letters about access to the courts without a structure or something, because I know there's no structures being built, but at this time at least, under this application. But what, do you have a line of travel or path of travel to get onto the courts and access them, or is it on parcel one through the access agreement?
Yes, there's a, for the Champions Club, there's access through a gate on one of the existing courts. There's an existing gate there, so there's no, there's no development proposed to cut open a gate or anything like that. So there's an existing gate through the parking lot that they access, and they do not need to access through Palisades Club. Palisades will have their own access, so separate access.
Do they, by right, have access through Palisades? Is that how they accomplish code? Or is the access through the gate, you know, meet all this, you know, people brought up ADA, stuff like that, does that meet all the qualifications?
Since there's no instruction right now that's being proposed, there is no required ADA upgrades.
There is a violation of use. How do we enforce, other than complaints, which maybe that is what happens? People complain, and then we enforce, and obviously, we can restrict use. But how do we actually enforce a violation of use?
We would conduct an investigation based upon a complaint. Our Code Enforcement Division would go out there and do whatever is necessary to observe the violation, and if there is a violation, we would put the offending party on notice, do a notice of violation. Sometimes we'll issue a warning, we'll have a conversation with them, and we would explain what the nature of the violation is, and then give them a reasonable amount of time to comply. And if there is failure to comply, there's a couple of things we can do. We can bring the permit back to review by the Planning Commission, and make changes to the permit, or even revoke a permit. So that's one avenue. The other avenue is to take some sort of legal action through civil or criminal means, depending upon the nature of the violation, so hopefully that answers your question.
Are there any ways to define that now in conditions? Or is, do we, I mean, sorry, I should have talked to you, I'm just kind of going off, but it seems a little bit vague, and I'm not expecting you to dig into the Muti code right now to tell me, but would we be able to define a condition of, you know, you're restricted if, you know, pickleball's being used when it's not approved?
Well, we have a condition that says pickleball is not allowed, not without an amendment to the permit or a new permit authorizing it. So if pickleball were to start up inconsistent with this, clear violation there, and it would be a cease and desist, and, or they would have to get an amendment. And we would be looking at both avenues if that is indeed what they wanted to do. And we believe through our code enforcement processes, we have all the tools necessary in order to implement that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair Harris. So, Mr. Lee, is it staff's opinion that now with kind of the two tennis operators, that they're kind of equally and severably liable for the sets of conditions on the use permit? In other words, like, the original use permit, Palisades is obligated to follow that, and so does Champions, in addition with these additional conditions? Is that, or are these conditions also part of Palisades' total use permit, you know, UP 1697?
Commissioner Langford, I'll tackle that question. You know, both operators have to comply with the use permit, all the conditions of the use permit. Now, the conditions on the staff approval really are applicable only to the Champions portion of the club.
Okay.
Because Palisades isn't here in front of us, so, but both operators are required to adhere to all the conditions.
And should Palisades not be able to secure parking in the immediate future? I know there's been some issues lately. Would that would then, to me, be a clear violation of their conditional, of their use permit? And they would probably have to come back here and straighten that out?
Sure, potentially. What we would do is engage in a conversation with Palisades. Okay, you know, they have an obligation to provide parking for their club, or at least their portion of the remaining, the reigning portion of the club, right? And where is that parking? Well, is it on parcel two? If the answer is no, then where are you parking? Now, is Hyatt allowing them to park on the broader Hyatt parcel, and how would we handle that? You know, if that is indeed the future for the Palisades parking arrangement, then we would get that request, analyze it for consistency with the use permit, and we would probably likely find it in substantial conformance. And the reason I say that is, is that that original use permit contemplates overflow parking on the Hyatt. So is it precisely the same site plan? No. But is it close enough? I believe it would be. And the reason is, otherwise, if they don't have the parking, they're going to have to provide offsite parking at a different lot somewhere that we can't identify at this point. And that might be a significant change that might require an amendment to this permit that might come back before the commission. So depending upon how the future parking negotiations go and what they are, will determine which path forward we see. So it, those are sort of the paths as I see them sitting here today.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Director.
I just wanted to address Secretary Harris's, or Chairman Harris's, whatever. Question about access. The access through Court Three is over a curb, over a beat-up sidewalk, and then at the back of Court Three and up a couple steps. So, I mean, I can't imagine that's even close to being any sort of ADA compliant. So to not have some sort of development plan to address that seems a bit lacking.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Commissioners, any ex parte communication? Commissioner Bartow?
Prior to the previous meeting, I received contact from Palisades, someone associated with them.
I visited the site, and I used to be a member of Palisades a number of years ago.
Before the previous meeting, a representative of Palisades, but nothing this time.
I spoke with Champions operator, as well as the attorney for the Palisades, or, I'm sorry, the appellant.
I spoke to the applicant and someone associated with the appellant, and I toured the property as well.
I also spoke with a representative from Champions.
All right, I will open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make presentation or comment? And are you okay? I was going to suggest like 10 minutes is max, is that okay for you? 30 minutes? Yeah, 10.
Chair Harris, Commissioners, Sean Matzler with Cox Castle Nicholson, on behalf of the Champion Tennis Club. Actually, the applicant's presentation will be in two parts. First, I'm going to speak for a few minutes, and then I'm going to follow it up with Gary Stugard. He's the representative for the owner, and he can speak about some of the parking issues and answer some of your questions. So I know a lot of you, I've been up here many times before, and this is a strange one, right? This is a huge turnout. What we're asking for is to play tennis on tennis courts where tennis has always been played before. It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple to me. So let me start by covering some basic facts about Champion's proposal, and I want to thank David Lee and staff for doing a great job on this. So I don't want to rehash what they've done, but I do want to make a couple of points. Champion asked the city for permission to use six existing tennis courts for tennis play and instruction. Palisades used these same tennis courts earlier this year. All of Champion's operational characteristics will be within the parameters of the existing use permit. Champion currently has an active lease for the property for this purpose. As a result of this appeal, Champion can't use the courts, and they've been fallow for months. Let me also cover what's not before you tonight. Pickleball is not proposed. In fact, it's prohibited by condition number six. Regardless of what happens here tonight, Palisades won't have a lease over these six courts. Nothing the Planning Commission does is going to get Palisades a lease over these six courts. Champion has a lease over these six courts. Third, as of last Monday, Palisades lost its right to park in the lot closest to the clubhouse. That parking lot's owned by the Hyatt, and Palisades has no lease with the Hyatt. However, as discussed, under condition number three, if the staff approval is upheld, Palisades will have a right to park on the property going forward. I believe that's a good outcome for the Palisades. Taking a step back, I want to say that Champion and its owners have a lot of respect for Palisades and its history and tradition. I respect that all the members showed up here tonight to speak on behalf of their club, but I want to say that I was surprised that Palisades didn't work harder to secure a lease over these six courts. They had the opportunity, and the owner's representative will speak to that tonight. I also want to say I'm surprised that we haven't heard back from the appellant's attorney. I've reached out to him to sit down and talk about his client's needs, and I haven't got a meeting, which is too bad. The owner's representative, who will speak after me, will address a few things. First, he'll explain that Champion was actually the applicant, or the owner's, second choice to operate these six courts. The easiest thing would have been for Hyatt to continue its relationship with Palisades. The Palisades has been there forever and made all the sense in the world. To that end, the owner gave Palisades what amounts to a right of first refusal over these six courts. So after, and Mr. Stugard can address this, but exactly how it worked is after Hyatt negotiated its lease agreement with Champion, the owner offered those same terms to Palisades. Palisades declined to execute on that, and so Hyatt leased the courts to Champion. This appears to me like a property rights issue. That's how it looks to me. That's how it looks to me. I mention all this because I believe that Champion, I'm sorry, that Palisades is now trying to leverage the city's land use process to undermine Champion's lease. I don't believe this has anything to do with SEQA or substantial evidence or piecemealing or anything else you're going to hear tonight. One of the reasons I think this is because Palisades has been sending out mailers to its members, and at the end of the member, at the end of the mailers, it says, please help me fight this bad decision by the Hyatt. So they're asking the members to show up here tonight, and so many of them did, to fight the Hyatt's decision. And I don't think that's a good use of your time. I don't think that's what the planning commission's here for. I don't think the planning commission's here to make private parties do things that they wouldn't negotiate a contract for, they wouldn't pay for. I don't think that's right. So tonight, we're respectfully asking for the planning commission to uphold the staff approval and to honor staff's recommendation. And with that, I would pass it to the owner's representative to say a few words. Yes?
While I have you, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
We do, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to read, if that's okay. My name is Gary Stugard. I'm the owner's representative and asset manager for the owner of the Higher Regency Newport Beach Hotel. I've served in this role since 2018, when the current owner acquired the property. I was also involved in the hotel from 2004 through 2007, when I managed this acquisition by a former owner. I am the only person in the room tonight who is involved in every conversation and discussion between Hyatt and the Palisades Tennis Club. Tonight, I'll explain exactly what happened during those conversations. I believe you will come to the same conclusion that I have, that Palisades is trying to use the city's land use appeal process to secure a private property right that Palisades was unwilling to pay for. Here are the facts and chronology of lease discussions with both Champion Management Group and Palisades. First, the ground lease and all extensions with Palisades, as noted earlier by staff, expired in March of '22. And after its expiration, Palisades made no effort to further extend the lease. I believe there had been three short extensions that, the original lease was 46 years, and there were some short extensions that we agreed upon with Palisades prior to and through the pandemic. Secondly, Champion approached us about leasing the tennis courts for conversion to pickleball in January of 2023. We believed that the Champion plan would bring new guests to the property and energize the Higher Regency Newport Beach Hotel. We fully negotiated a lease with Champion for the tennis courts and adjacent parking spaces during the months of May and June of 2023. Before, however, before executing the lease agreement with Champion, in June of 2023, we presented the lease to Palisades to see if they would match its terms, essentially giving them a right of first refusal, to which they had no right for any of the lease agreements or extensions. In June of 2023, Palisades declined, saying they had no interest in pickleball and indicating that they thought the game was a fad and would be irrelevant within five years. In July of 2023, Thomas Duddy, the appellant and a Palisades member, together with a third party but representing Palisades, as confirmed by Palisades, presented an offer to lease the courts in partnership with Palisades for their conversion to and operation as 24 pickleball courts. When I asked the owner of the Palisades Tennis Club if in fact he had changed his mind, he said yes. This plan was similar to the plan proposed by Champion, but on lesser financial terms than those offered by Champion. We executed the lease with Champion and issued a notice to Palisades to stop using and vacate the courts by the end of July 2023. To ensure that Palisades members would have parking in the lot adjacent to the Palisades clubhouse, we offered Palisades a lease for 53 parking spaces, a number of spaces that we agreed upon with Palisades as adequate, in this lot at well below market rates, which they chose not to execute. I should note, this was, this was a lease for three years. Instead, in July 2023, Palisades responded by removing the lights, nets, and wind screens before Champion took possession of these courts. Because these items were attached to the real property during the term of the Palisades lease, consistent with California law, they became the property of the property owner, a fact that we repeatedly pointed out to Palisades. In July of 2023, Champion applied for city staff approval for the use of these tennis courts for tennis purposes, which approval was approved on August 3rd, as pointed out by staff earlier. In early August of 2023, Thomas Duddy, a Palisades member, appealed the city's staff approval, which is the reason we are here tonight. We believe that he has also engaged a lobbyist to publicly question the intent and actions of both Champion and Hyatt. We believe that the sole purpose of these actions is to delay the approval of Champion's staff approval, sort of approval application for use of the courts as tennis courts, and keep the property owner from enjoying the benefits of their rental income under the lease. We accepted payments for the use of 72 parking spaces for Palisades for the months of August and September of 2022, in hopes that Palisades would return the items illegally removed from our property. In reaction to the actions described previously, together with Palisades continuing refusal to return the lights, nets, and wind screens, which we believe California law supports, are our property, we notified Palisades that we would no longer allow them to use the parking lot adjacent to the Palisades clubhouse. I should note that this is after several conversations with the Palisades club owner, asking him to please coordinate or tone down the efforts of his, of his members. We also agreed to negotiate discounted parking rates for their, for the Palisades member in the lot to the west of the Hyatt, which we talked about earlier as overflow. Palisades currently has no valid agreement or rights to use the tennis courts or parking spaces located on our property. In light of the foregoing and despite the actions of Palisades to date, if and when city's staff approval for the use of these courts by Champion for tennis purposes is upheld, we will work with Palisades to negotiate reasonable lease terms to make parking available to Palisades members on the Higher Regency Newport property, whether in this lot or elsewhere. We believe we've done everything we can that's reasonably possible to accommodate Palisades and, and the needs of Palisades members. We respect the fact that there's been a long-term relationship. I think the most important evidence of that is that we offered the same deal that we received from Champion to Palisades, which they refused. We believe the Champion's plan will be bringing, as I said earlier, new guests to the property and energize the Higher Regency Newport Beach Hotel. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Celine?
Question regarding access. You know, I mean, is it honestly the attempt to access the courts at the back of Court Three? Or is there another plan?
At this point, I have no idea what the applicant's plan is. That said, the applicant has indicated that, well, I guess I should say this a different way. If you want to talk about ADA, I'm not sure it works today.
The current configuration.
Access from Palisades.
No, I'm just talking about the six courts.
I am talking about the six courts also.
We've, I've been on site with staff. I don't know if staff wants to address it, but Commissioner, the, the plan, there's an existing gate on Court Three. It was actually installed there by Palisades many years ago to allow for ADA access at that time for a tournament. And so that's the gate that Palisade, or that Champion would use to access, and it's not ideal, but it gets people in and out.
And whether, look, whether that's, whether that's the only access that ultimately is made to these courts is, is, it's on my property. We'll, we'll work with Champion.
I understand that. That's why I'm asking if there was another alternative. I mean, either through the golf course side or on the backside or something.
We're happy to provide access.
Because three, because that current access just seems very inadequate.
Yeah. So I walked the site with staff member Lee a week ago and talked about alternatives. If, on the golf course side, if that's the commission's preference, and if that's what the building division decides is appropriate to comply with ADA, can certainly work with that.
Okay, but is there any need, I mean, if this is upheld, is there any need to go back to planning, to, to work on access? Or can they just simply start operating?
So, so Commissioner Celine, so the way the, the, the building division will enforce access is only it's triggered if there's development. From a planning standpoint, this discussion is strictly from a land use perspective. So we're, we don't have anything to trigger from ADA access or ADA upgrades. It always, it's only triggered when there's development. And if they're not proposing any development this time, we, we couldn't mandate any type of ADA access. If the commission wants to make a motion and, and clear that up, you definitely need approval to do that, but that's not an automatic trigger.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Stugard, thank you. Thank you both for coming tonight. No, no, I actually have a question for Mr. Stugard.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So when you were going through the timeline, I appreciate you spelling it out because it was a little vague, and we, I don't think we had that information. But you very specifically said that the proposal was for 24 pickleball courts, and that you provided that to Palisades with a rofer, right of first refusal, excuse me? And they said, no, you're in here.
I did not say that. That is not what I said.
Okay, I missed.
Proposal from.
Please, please, please.
The proposal, play the tape. The proposal from Palisades was for 24 pickleball courts.
Okay.
I received a separate proposal for 24 pickleball courts.
Excuse me, everyone, please, you'll have your turn to talk.
I received a separate proposal from Palisades for the conversion of these six tennis courts to 24 pickleball courts. Okay? Please understand, there, those are separate.
I'm just trying to get the, the story, that's all.
And understand also that Champion's proposal is to create 21 pickleball courts, ultimately.
Okay. But everything we're being told, and I'm sorry, there's some history here from, not in, not on this property, and I'm not using that against you, I'm just saying, we've been, we want to know what we are approving with what we're, and what we're not approving. We're approving tennis today.
That's it.
If it's held, and that's it. So it gets a little confusing when there's emails, there's plans, there's videos about pickleball, yet you're saying there's tennis. That's all. So I just want to clear up what you said and what the offers were back and forth, and I, I don't need to know about your business.
We're here today to talk about tennis, okay? And tennis only. And, and that's what Champion's intended use is, if and until they come to you with a, a plan to convert to pickleball use that they seek your approval for, and they will do everything that they need to do to check every box to get that approval. I think the most important thing that I can tell you, that most people in this room do not know, is that Palisades, through Tom Duddy, also made me a proposal to lease these tennis courts on a long-term basis, specifically for their conversion to use as 24 pickleball courts.
Please.
I can provide any document that you'd like to see.
No, no, thank you for making it clear. I'm just trying to get clarity.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Just going back to the parking, made the comment that, you know, if this was approved, that you would be providing, or re-providing, I guess, the parking back to Palisades. Is there any assurances that can be given?
Well, let me say this. Throughout this process, I encouraged both Champion and Palisades to work together. I went to Palisades and said, if you have 10 tennis courts or nine and a half tennis courts, how many parking spaces do you need? I was told they need 50. I said, I don't believe you have ADA compliant parking spaces. No, we don't. I said, my understanding is that the building department is going to require you to have those because you've applied for a permit to do some renovation to the building. Yes, they have. So I'll lease you three additional spaces for a total of 53 in that lot. Okay? And I have a plan that shows exactly where those spaces are, that I asked them to sign for a three-year lease. Because of all of this, I am no longer willing to lease them spaces for three years. Unless and until my interests are protected, and I understand exactly where we're going in this process, I am not willing to enter into any long-term lease agreement at this point with Palisades. I will, however, continue to provide spaces in our, in, in the overflow lot for them to park. But this, we have, we've gotten to this point because no one has been willing to work together. And the truth in this process is that I have encouraged everyone from the start to work together. And the idea that somehow there is any plan afoot to deprive Palisades of either tennis courts or parking is just not true, because I think I went above and beyond what you would expect of any landowner to ensure that they continue to have, to enjoy the use of those courts and their parking.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. When you talk about the overflow parking lot, just for clarity, is that, where's the overflow parking?
It's on the west side of, of the hotel.
Okay, so that, down off Bayside Drive, or, I'm sorry, off of?
You can access it from Bayside Drive or from the, there's another gate on, on the hotel side.
Back Bay Drive.
Back Bay Drive, that's right.
Yeah, I misspoke, sorry. Okay, so on the whole of the side of the hotel?
Correct.
And the question would be for staff in relation to that, when it comes to condition number three, that qualifies from the perspective of the city?
I'm sorry, I'm condition number three in front of me, but, but would that parking arrangement be acceptable under the use permit?
Yeah.
I think we would need to do that, otherwise, if they didn't have parking, then we'd have to shut the club down, or they'd have to provide parking at some unknown lot somewhere else, which farther away. So I, I think that's a.
I apologize. In relation to condition number three of.
I've got it in front of me.
The permit in front of us, not the previous. Adequate parking for the Palisades Tennis Club of parcel one shall be provided on the Higher Regency Hotel property. So it's big property, that would qualify.
Yes.
Okay. And that's what you would intend to do to fulfill that obligation at this current point? Or?
If we can all together, work together, I have already offered to lease them 50 spaces right next to their front door, but somehow that is not good enough.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please keep your comments down. The public's going to have a chance to speak after. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Commissioners? Any other comments? You guys okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Does the appellant want to make a presentation?
Secretary Harris, members of the commission, my name is Michael Shauna felt. I'm legal counsel for the appellant, Thomas Duddy, who is here. I did want to make some points in support of the appeal, which is before you, and in response to some of the comments made by the applicant. I think that the confusion which has manifested before the commission right now is exactly what SEQA piecemealing as a principle is designed to prevent. What we have here is, and I appreciate in some respects Mr. Stugard's honesty and openness about this, they want 24 pickleball courts. It's in attachment four of your agenda packets. Mr. Lee, if you could queue up the animation, which is available for the world to see, this is the project, and you can see a flyover of it. That's not tennis. That's not tennis. That's six tennis courts converted to 24 pickleball courts. And that's the project. Now, I've heard, and I appreciate Mr. Campbell's comments and Ms. Summerhill's comments about this idea that if you have independent utility in a project, it's not SEQA piecemealing, but not when the record is manifest, that this is the intent. So what you're going to be getting is a sequenced set of discretionary approvals, this being the first. And that's what SEQA piecemealing is designed to prevent, because at this hearing, this public is not getting the benefit of what SEQA as a statute is supposed to guarantee, which is the full public disclosure of the impacts of the project. These, this project that you see here, which is, as we've heard, the real project, and that's almost indisputable, it quadruples the impacts, right? It quadruples at a bare minimum if you're turning. It quadruples at a bare minimum if you're turning one tennis court into four. That's multiplying impacts, and this is not accounting for tournaments. Okay, we see that the tennis club has got a lot of tournaments going on, there are pickleball tournaments. We're not even throwing that into the mix. The public is being, these impacts are getting occluded from the record. The public's being deprived of seeing what this project really will do, not just to Palisades, but to the neighborhood, really. And CQa mandates that you guys disclose, review and disclose the environmental impacts of a project. So that didn't happen here. This is a Trojan horse, before you hear. And this is the, excuse me, this is the thin side of the wedge coming in. And I've got my letter here that I submitted dated October 17th. On page two, CQa, it states quoting from CQa Piecemealing Principles in Case Law, "CQa mandates that environmental considerations do not become submerged by chopping up a large project into many little ones, each with a minimal potential impact on the environment, but which cumulatively may have disastrous consequences." For that reason, CQa mandates, quote, "The whole of an action which has the potential for resulting in a physical change in the environment directly, ultimately, and includes the activity which is being approved and which may be subject to several discretionary approvals by governmental agencies," end quote. Elsewhere, you know, this looks fairly benign, right? This is a change of ownership. But change of ownership cannot be seen in isolation. It creates a quote-unquote "fallacy of division." There's a case I cited on page three of my letter which talks about that. "A mere change of ownership in and of itself may be adequate ground for invoking a CQa exemption like was done here tonight, but it is not sufficient if the total project and the implications of that ownership are viewed quote-unquote 'too narrowly.'" And that's Los Angeles Department of Water and Power v. County of Inyo, 67 Calop Fifth, 1018, a 2021 case, and the other citations are in my letter. So that's what we're seeing here, it's textbook, and that's the issue. And I'm seeing some confusion coming from the commission. This shouldn't be confusing, right? And I understand counsel for the applicant states that it's fairly straightforward. Well, maybe not, you know? It might appear that way, but we're seeing that maybe it isn't. The other thing that change, this separate management has done is now a matter of record as well. I was down to the site before I came here, and it looks like a crime scene because every single one of those 73 or 72 spaces is now taped off. Palisades members cannot use them. Now, that is a disruption of UP 1697. And you can't invoke UP 1697 like Champion's trying to do, and then at the same time undermine it, subvert it. I, you know, I represent Thomas Duddy, I, you know, I'm here on his behalf. I wasn't privy to every detail of the lease negotiations, but I don't think those are before you right now. What is before you is the record, and a matter of record is that right now Palisades members can't use them. And we heard from Mr. Stugard that he's not willing to get to a lease with, for those spaces right now, right? This is why UP 1697, approved by this commission, not constituted, it was constituted differently in October 4th of 1973, when it was approved. It said, this, it made it clear that's had to be single management to avoid this very problem. And if you look at parcel one, which is the south course with the six courts, and parcel two, excuse me, parcel two is the south courts, six, the ones that Champion wants to manage. Parcel one are the Palisades courts. They are separate parcels, but they, because they're separate, that's why UP 1697 required single integrated management. And it also envisioned, what we see on the title, reciprocal access easements. And while staff has concluded the reciprocal easements don't include parking, I don't think that conclusion can so confidently be made. Those are access over and along both parcels. And obviously, those, the access rights, those easement rights were intended to realize the vision of UP 1697. A seamless operation with single management. We now see the implications, what happens when you break that management and fracture UP 1697. As a matter of fact, if Palisades cannot continue to have access to those spots because of what Palisades might consider to be an unreasonable offer for the lease of those spots, it could very well result in the lapse of 1697 for lack of use, UP 1697. Of course, we wouldn't want that to happen. So the, there's problems with this action tonight on two very big fronts. CQa, you know, basically occluding from the public view what the real impacts are going to be and what the real project really is, on the one hand. And two, rupturing UP 1697 in a manner that creates what we're seeing down on the site right now. And that's certainly not the vision of this permit, which has been running with the land for 50 years. And those parking spots have been freely available for 50 years. Now, with respect to ADA and the access issues, I think staff's correct. Normally, if there were a development, you would handle that through a building permit process. But we don't have a building permit process here. So these ADA issues, they really have to get addressed. And if nothing else, you know, we need, there needs to be a bundled set of agreements that are ratified to ensure that the purposes and the intent of the use permit that runs with this land are continuing to be honored. And, but mainly, we just need to see the project come back and be comprehensively reviewed, and all the projects' impacts fully disclosed. Otherwise, the commission can't do its job as a decision maker, nor can it really adhere to the mandates of CQa. So thank you for letting me speak, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Bartow?
So is it, thanks for coming.
Sure.
Is it your impression that when Palisades was unable to renew its lease and maintain its parking, that at that point, you think Palisades was in violation of UP 67, 1967?
We can't, we can't fulfill a condition that's outside our control, so no. If anyone was in violation of UP 1697, it was the sublesser.
If the, I mean, I guess this is a, this is a legal question, you're a lawyer, but if somebody has a condition put upon them, and they don't maintain that condition, it's somebody else's fault?
There's something called the doctrine of impossibility. And if you can't fulfill a condition because you, it's impossible to fulfill, namely, we can't use parking unless we're at the beck and call of a third party's lease terms, and if those lease terms are unreasonable. No, that's not a violation on the part of Palisades. That's a violation on the part of the Hyatt as the sublesser of those spots. Because they're impeding the access to the spots.
I guess, this is maybe a fine point, but if I have a restaurant and I have a use permit, and I lose my lease with my landlord, is the landlord violating my condition? Or I'm violating my condition by not maintaining that lease?
Well, the, in this case, the lease was anticipated and bundled into UP 1697. It was a feature, an integrated feature of the original use permit. So this is a very unique situation. There was a requirement that there be a lease. It was referenced that that lease allow reciprocal access and reasonable access to parking. And if you look at the record, which is before you in your packet, there's a reference to the fact that the lease needed to ensure that that happened. The applicant at the time was the lessee, and it was the John Wayne Tennis Club at the time. So your restaurant example is good, but doesn't apply here because the lease is an integral part of UP 1697. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to open this to public comment. May I first see a show of hands for who all plans to speak tonight? What I'd like to do, what I'm going to do is go to two minutes per speaker, but if you need more, please request it at the dais. I know this is an emotional issue, it's heated issue. Please be respectful, please refrain from clapping, from cheering. Let's just try to be cordial and get through this. And we'll take public speakers up the podium now. Please give your name and your address for the record.
My name is Cindy Borkhamen Martin. I live at 2217 Private Road, Newport Beach. I was referred by the person, like, they were saying I was doing propaganda emails to the members. What actually is, I'm a very strong person and I love Palisades, it's my family. And I told Eric I was going to do this, Davidson, the owner of Palisades, and he said he didn't want to get involved in it in any way because he wanted to be neutral, to do dealings with the Hyatt. And so I took that upon myself. Sean Abdali has been in front of the city before regarding pickleball in the past. Palisade members were concerned that once he got the lease for the one and six tennis courts, he would turn them into pickleball courts overnight. So we organized. Sean, during COVID, without permits, did change tennis courts at TLC, or whatever it's called, Tennis Club, to 32 pickleball courts. Imagine the horror of Granville residents, just a minute, I need more time, if that's okay. Granville residents, that their peaceful lifestyle was destroyed overnight, and their property values were affected. Now, they went to Sean, they went to the city to tell them, look, my life is in distress because I'm hearing pickleball tournaments that have loudspeakers and a lot of noise and a lot of pickleball. And so their lifestyle was affected, so we were very upset about. There was no opportunity for them to appeal. But Palisade members do have a chance now. Mr. Abdali says he wants to, wants a permit for tennis. But the evidence shows the real intent is to have pickleball. We are here to protect Palisades' quality of life without the noise. Thank you. And also, I'd like to cue a video clip.
Operator, why is that?
That we are not happy with the current operator due to several reasons. One, that we, well, actually, Robert was kind enough to confirm that he misreported his gross sales. So we feel that he has not been forthright in what he's been paying. That is extremely undermarket, that our new agreement is for, depending on whether you count percentage or not, between seven and 14 times the amount of rent we are currently getting. And that we don't think that he has treated members fairly, that many have complained about a lot of his actions. And the facility can be much upgraded. We are part owners of the country club next door, a beautiful facility. And we think that it doesn't need to look exactly like that, but there should be locker rooms that work, bathrooms that work. And we also understand that he, Sean, does not actually run pickleball, that he didn't actually start it, and that there's other groups that are running the pickleball events and the day-to-day pickle operations. So we actually want someone. Sean, I believe, is a great tennis operator. We heard a lot of people today talk about how much they've loved his tennis and how meaningful it's been. I didn't hear a lot about pickleball, and so we want someone that actually really knows pickleball and can do everything.
Also, I wanted to also mention that I don't think Sean Abdali is a man of his word, as his partners were saying. And I would like to make sure that we make sure there's permits, because my understanding, I'm not sure if this is correct, but my understanding-
Ms., please, please finish up here.
There's still not pickleball permits over at the tennis club.
Thank you. Are there any other slideshows or presentations requested?
No.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Rabbit. I live at 4240 Park Newport. I'm here to support my club. My family came here in 1930. And we have a, the Rabbits have a longstanding relationship here. When I was growing up, I'm one of five kids. My parents didn't have a lot of money. And there was surfing, sailing, a lot of free things to do here, but tennis was something my mom wanted us to have. So in 1973, the John Wayne Tennis Club was offering very, very reasonable family memberships, and we could ride our bike to the club. So my parents bought one of the original memberships in 1973. We saw John Wayne break ground on the club. It was very exciting. And I remember when the clubhouse was not finished, we would come in through that little access, through the gate on Court Three. And there was a little flap, and you would walk through it. I think, as I recall, it was only there for about maybe six months or a year, and then they finished the clubhouse, and then we could come in. And I don't know what ADA means, but it's tough to get in through there. Anyway, junior tennis was our life. I met my best girlfriend on Court Two when I was 10, and I'm 60 now, so do the math. So junior tennis was amazing at the time. It was only Thursday nights and Saturdays, and we had junior team tennis. Over the years, it grew into afternoon tennis after school and summer camp. So obviously, much more expanded. And I was one of the teachers that has taught the juniors over the years as an adult. So the lifeline of a club like ours, only 16 courts, not 28 courts, not 32 courts, only 16 courts. That's the lifeblood of a club, is that the next generation grows up and brings their kids, and they bring their kids. So if you've got nine and a half courts on one side, and then six tennis courts on the other side, how are you going to let your kids have a junior program so that you can have your family, that we've, that's been our whole lifeline, growing up?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And if there's other speakers, if you want to queue up in the aisle, one or two deep, if you're waiting, and please, your name and your address, and if you need more time, just request it, we'll be okay.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Liz McNabb, and I am a resident of Costa Mesa, but I have been a member of Palisades for 25 years. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening regarding the use of 1171 Jamboree Boulevard Palisades Tennis Club. Palisades has been a part of the fabric of the Newport Beach community for 50 years, which is so impressive. John Wayne was a distinguished member himself. It is a vibrant club with dedicated members, staff, and ownership. It is a place where people can not only exercise and stay fit, but socialize and make lifelong friendships. That is why we refer to ourselves as the Palisades family. You can see that we are very committed to our club. We regularly hold fundraisers to support important causes. Just on Monday evening, we raised thousands of dollars for breast cancer patients. We have recently supported aid for Maui, Ukraine, and formerly Puerto Rico after the hurricane. It is because we care so deeply about our club that the seizure of Courts One through Six has been so upsetting, especially when the new facility purports to be used for tennis. This seems disingenuous. Why would you need a new vendor for the same use? Established, established community spaces are vital for a healthy city. It is my greatest hope that a compromise can be reached between the Hyatt and Palisades Tennis Club owner, Eric Davidson, so that we can continue to operate as the jewel of the Orange County tennis community as it has for the last 50 years. Thank you very much.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.
an agreement with the club to operate pickleball courts. And I don't believe this is not piecemealing. It is, because his intention has always been pickleball operation. I would ask, the company that he have interest in, which is CMG, had what percentage of operation in tennis that they actually owned? Or the majority of it is in pickleball courts or pickleball operations? I do believe this is the first step to convert the Sixth Court at Palisades to tennis versus, not tennis, but pickleball in operation. And for the information from, I know as a Seacliff member, there are residents in the Seacliff area that was complaining about noise, that court that they converted over, so they have to move that the pickleball court recently, currently right now, to a further distance from the residents. And that distance from the resident is the same distance that your gas room at the Hyatt versus, and the Sixth Court currently right now. So what I'm trying to portray is the pickleball courts are not going to be good for the residents everywhere else that have happening. Thank you.
Secretary Harris, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I may need the normal three minutes for this. First of all, I don't know how widespread the confusion is, or if I'm the only one confused, but I noticed Commissioner Bartow was reading the conditions of approval that are on page 28 of the packet, and I believe if you approve the resolution, the actual conditions that you would be approving, which are different, are on page 22. So there are people talking about two different condition threes. The main comment I wanted to make is, whatever correct page is for the conditions, I do not believe you can approve or ratify the staff approval of this, because I do not think this application was eligible for a staff approval. The reason I don't think it's eligible is found on page 18, where you will see that there is a finding C that has to be made for staff approval, which is that the application does not involve a feature of the project that was specifically addressed, or was the subject of a condition of approval of the project, or that was a specific consideration by the applicable review authority in the project approval. That original approval happened, as you heard, on October 4th, 1973. If you look in the agenda packet at pages 54 through, and following, you will see the minutes of that planning commission meeting. And if you look specifically at pages 56 and 57, you'll see the planning commission on that night was seeing not one thing, but two things. One was the use permit, 1697, and the other item that came immediately after it, has a line drawn through it, was the request to create the two parcels for the development, which was called re-subdivision 413. And if you look at the bottom of the preceding page, page 56, you'll see condition of approval of 11 of the original use permit was that all of the applicable provisions of the re-subdivision apply to the use permit. And on page 57, the line is drawn through it, you will see the first three conditions. Unfortunately, if you turn the page over, you don't see the remaining conditions. But if you go and look at the minutes from that, and look at what is on the following page, condition eight of the re-subdivision, said that the two parcels will be maintained for the duration of the lease as a single development. And you will also see, contrary to what the staff has been telling you, that the use of parcel two for off-street parking, and this is independent of any lease, and perpetual access to parcel one shall be maintained. So there is a problem with the parking, there's also a problem with the idea that it will be, although the Irvine Company was allowed to make two parcels, I don't know why they wanted to do that, it was clearly an understanding of the planning commission at that time, it was clearly a consideration before them, that they were seeing these two things together, and they were expecting the use to be a single one. It's quite doubtful that they would have had the same conclusion if the Irvine Company was telling it was going to be two competing clubs, one club having control over the parking and another club having control over the clubhouse. Therefore, this clearly is not what they were considering at the time of this, therefore it is not eligible for staff approval. And I don't know if the buzzer was the end of two minutes or one. I would also point out, if you did approve it, that there's a number of contradictions and mistakes in the resolution, but I won't bother you with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, thank you Newport Council. This is, my name is Danielle. I have been a member at Palisades Tennis Club for the last 29 years, that is my whole life. My dad, who just recently passed, was a member of the Palisades Tennis Club, the original Palisades Tennis Club, before it moved to the current location as of 1974, I believe. I could be wrong on that, by a few years. We just celebrated his funeral at the Palisades Tennis Club, ironically, in front of the courts that they are using or hoping to use in the future. I think that, you know, just my personal take on having to park so far away, and the Palisades Tennis Club has been very kind in providing golf carts to its members to take us from the lower lot up to the top lot. And I am in pretty good shape, I like to say, I can't say for all of us here, but we're trying, we're doing our best. And it's a lot. It's a lot to go up, especially at night. As a single woman, I don't feel super comfortable going at 8:00 PM at night with my bag, and I call people on the phone, and I'm like, hey, I'm walking down to this lot, and there's lights, but I don't know if I'm going to be okay, can you make sure? And I don't want to have to do that. I want to stay, and I want to keep in shape, and I want to be a part of this community. I have been, and my family has been for the last 50 years, so I want to keep that going. I noticed that Sean just joined us in the audience. Thanks, Sean. I know you're a part of the original proposal. I hope you're not part of the next proposal, if this gets approved tonight. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Debbie McCormick. I actually live in Huntington Beach, but I was a member of the Palisades Tennis Club for over 25 years. I spent my life there, all my friends were there. If you know the history of the club, we have the greatest tennis players in the world from Palisades, and we have the best club in the country at Palisades. And it seems like it's really emotional now, and it's really getting broken up, and I just think it's awful to even consider, half of us, if you play, if you played sports, you know you're injured half the time, I was, and to walk that far carrying all your stuff up, and it's really terrible. So, I mean, I just love that club, and I'd hate to ruin the fabric of the city and the fabric of the club, and please don't do the wrong thing. We love our tennis. Thank you.
Before I get started, I just want to express my gratitude for all of you being here and taking time out of your day to listen to all of us. I firmly believe life is all about service, I tip my hat off to you. My name is Alex Shakkus. I'm a Huntington Beach citizen. I grew up playing at Seacliff Country Club, now the Huntington Club. I joined Palisades early this year, always wanted to play there. I've been part of this tennis community the last, my entire life, but really actively the last 15, 16 years. My argument tonight to you is economic in nature, not only here to advocate for our club, the Palisades, but also the Hyatt, and also you, the city. It's only a matter of time, but we're, pickleball eventually overtakes tennis. I know that. It's going to happen. The barrier of entry is lower, it's more cost-effective, they make more money. I get it. There's a couple of places, though, where it's not going to happen. Near golf courses, near hotels, and near residencies. It makes too much loud, it's obnoxious, and they don't want it. You don't want this headache. We don't want it either. As tennis courts decrease, the demand's not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere. We're players, we're going to keep playing. And every year, the tennis courts decrease, and Palisades stay exactly the way it is. It becomes more valuable to us, and more valuable to you, and more valuable to the Hyatt. Strongly encourage you to keep it the way it is. It is the best club in the country, let alone here in California. And if hypothetically, by some miracle, it managed to be the only pickleball center that would succeed in an area that otherwise wouldn't, I would encourage you to pick someone who is very clear and transparent and doesn't muddy the water, and uses their real name.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Carl Mazzi, and I'm a member at TTC. And I'd like to thank you all for your time, and everybody that's here. I feel sorry for the Palisades people, because we're all neighbors, we're all from Newport Beach. This is a very, it's an emotional, for everybody, but also, life goes on. You know, I remember when nobody was going to build Newport Coast. Boy, that didn't happen. I remember when the 73 freeway was going to be built, I'd try to go to work in the morning. I lived in Eliseville at the time, and people were laying in the street. Change is good. And right now, and even you guys up here as a committee, kept bringing up pickleball, pickleball, pickleball. That's not a part of this whole thing tonight, and why we keep going back to it's pretty sad. If that comes in front of you at some time, let's address it then. But you got all the people here even confused, and that's not right, because that's not what this is about here tonight. And you all do a wonderful job, but you should keep it in perspective. This is for a tennis application. Would you agree? So I think that's where we need to leave it. I also think that we have two Granville members at TTC. They are the absolute two houses that back up to our courts. They absolutely love us. And all the neighbors, if it became that other thing you guys want to talk about that's not a part of this evening, over at Palisades, you know, your owner had a chance to step up and sign, and he didn't. I would be protesting in his front yard with your pretty little signs than bringing them in here, because he's the one that had the opportunity to keep it perfect Palisades. All this man's doing is moving on and doing business. Norson's going to go out of business in two years. Is Donald Brenn going to be upset if Macy's wants to take that spot, and Norson's going to come back and fight it? Absolutely not. It's strictly business, let's keep it business, let's get all the emotions out of it, and it's up to you guys to make a smart, critical decision that benefits this country. Forty-three million people are playing pickleball today. Tennis and golf are the fastest dying sports on the planet. So when somebody comes up here and says, when people come up here and they say, I can give you those facts.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hunter. I live in Huntington Beach.
Excuse me, excuse me, one second, excuse me. Please keep it down. If you want to talk, you can come up and talk, I'll give you your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hunter. I live in Huntington Beach, but I grew up in Newport Beach. Actually, went to Newport Harbor with Brady. We scrimmaged in water polo together, and obviously, he was better than me. So, I want to say is, there's a couple of factors that haven't been discussed as far as the logistics. They're all, I work at Palisades Tennis Club, I work in the reception desk, and I also work in administration. And one thing that hasn't been addressed is, there's no way for this new club to check its members in. Like, where are they going to go? There's no structure allowed to be built, so are they going to check in at the gate when they walk through the gate? Who's going to be able to maintain the safety of the members as they come in and out? Do they have any sort of CBR system set up, any kind of AED system set up, to where their members are actually going to be protected? Who's going to look over that? Another thing is, all the electricity that runs the lights on those front six courts goes through Palisades. We have the switches on our property. There's no plan for them to be able to reorganize the electrical system so that they can even work the lights that they're demanding to have back, which Eric Davidson purchased in the first place. So I'm not really sure how any sort of planning commission could skip over such a huge logistical problem as far as the safety of needing lights in order to play in the first place, and the safety of needing lights for people walking through the parking lot, and all these other issues. Another thing, the restrooms that are at the Hyatt, which I've seen many times, and the restrooms that are at the Palisades Tennis Club, basically, there is no way for handicapped people to access the restrooms at the Hyatt unless they cross through an entire parking lot and go through a roundabout, and others, many other logistical issues. As far as the parking goes, that we're being allowed to use the overflow lot, well, we're allowed to, but at a highly, highly exorbitant rate of pricing. We have to pay tons and tons of money, so right now, we're actually having to refund all of our members who use that parking lot. That parking lot is very poorly maintained. There's been many complaints of, not just Palisades members, but guests of the hotel not even be able to exit the parking lot, because the parking arm isn't even properly maintained. So not just in the daytime, but young women, men, young people at danger for 20 minutes sitting there waiting to just exit the parking lot. So there's all kinds of other logistical issues that aren't being considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Julie Sherwin. I've been a resident of Corona Del Mar for 25 years, and I guess I'm a little perplexed. The gentleman over here, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Planner, they said that pickleball is not a consideration, and that it is not, I don't know the proper term, but I want to call it piecemeal or bait and switch, you know, especially after seeing a fly-through. And I don't know if that's still your position after seeing that fly-through, that that clearly is something that seems to be considered. Mr. Stugard noted that the intention would be pickleball courts, but that this meeting is regarding tennis. And I thought that was a really well-thought choice of words, because he'd like it to keep it just about tennis, and not the whole extension of what I, from what I'm seeing, this is my first planning commission, that's what I would derive from that. And I'm just not convinced that six tennis courts would realize the increase in revenue that he seems to be envisioning. But you know what? I bet 23 or 24 pickleball courts, that would. And that kind of makes me think, okay, that is the ultimate goal. And he did mention a lease was offered. My, you know, what I want to know, was it in line with what our past increases have been over the past 50 years? Or is it so exorbitant that it's almost like extortion? And a squeeze on Palisades so that they can't operate, and that they're not going to be able to, if they may choose not to do that, because it's not within their reason, within reason, and that that would also help to optimize their ultimate goal, which is pickleball. If they truly are not envisioning pickleball, they should have no problem signing a legal document that pickleball would not be permitted for like the next 25 years, if that's their true intent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to possibly need more than three minutes. My name is, my name is Mary Helen, I'm going to tell you why I need.
Sorry, no, it's okay. You're allowed two minutes, but do you need three or more?
Yes, please.
Do you have an idea of how much time you need?
Probably like five minutes. It's going to be different. So my name is Mary Helen.
Just a second, please.
Yeah, I think that we just need to maintain consistent, universal rules in terms of the amount of time that's allocated, unless we're talking about.
We'll notice you at three minutes, and then just try to wrap it up after, please.
That sounds perfect.
Thank you.
So my name is Mary Helen Beata Ficato. I live here in Newport Beach. I'm also a Palisades member, but more importantly, I've been a practicing attorney for 21 years. What I want to say tonight is not what you're going to, you've been hearing, and while I am a Palisades member, and I love my community, and we do great things, and we serve great causes, I want to address a legal argument that I reviewed the staff report, I've reviewed everything that was submitted, and I haven't heard this argument made exactly like this, but I'm following up on the last two speakers. So. to, if they may choose not to do that, because it's not within their reason, within reason, and that that would also help to optimize their ultimate goal, which is pickleball. If they truly are not envisioning pickleball, they should have no problem signing a legal document that pickleball would not be permitted for like, the next 25 years, if that's their true intent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna possibly need more than three minutes. My name is Mary Helen, I'm gonna tell you why I need-
Sorry, no, it's okay. You're allowed two minutes, but do you need three or more?
Yes, please.
Do you have an idea of how much time you need?
Probably like, five minutes. It's gonna be different. So, my name is Mary Helen-
Just a second, please.
Yeah, I think that we just need to maintain consistent, universal rules in terms of the amount of time that's allocated, unless we're talking about-
Look, we'll notice you at three minutes, and then just try to wrap it up after, please.
That sounds perfect.
Thank you.
So, my name is Mary Helen Beata Ficato. I live here in Newport Beach. I'm also a Palisades member, but more importantly, I've been a practicing attorney for 21 years. What I wanna say tonight is not what you're gonna, you've been hearing, and while I am a Palisades member, and I love my community, and we do great things, and we serve great causes, I wanna address a legal argument that I reviewed the staff report, I've reviewed everything that was submitted, and I haven't heard this argument made exactly like this, but I'm following up on the last two speakers. So, there's, there's something that is referred to as piecemealing, and it, it comes in the context of CEQA a lot, and there's case law that establishes this. And what it is, is that you cannot take a project and piecemeal it. And so, if one part is just a phase of a project, then you, as a planning commission, need to consider the entire project. And I think that's what's going on here tonight. You hear people get up and go, "This isn't about tennis, and this isn't about pickleball." What is important is, you can't ignore the facts that have been presented to you, and the applicant, it's not just conjecture or speculation that they might do pickleball. This is what their intent is to do, is pickleball. And if we have any question about whether that's true or not, all you have to do, like the woman before me, is ask them. Say, "Are you gonna stand up here as the applicant and say you are not going to operate pickleball on those courts?" And I'm willing to bet that the answer's gonna be no. They're not going to, especially on advice of counsel. They're not gonna pigeonhole themselves into that, especially if that's what their intent is. So I wanna refer you, and maybe if you have to take this under submission, and then come out with your decision, but Orlanda Association versus Board of Supervisors, it's 182, Cal App 3rd, 1145. And basically, in that case, there was a bank and a theater that were historic sites, they were on the certified national registry. The developer who came in wanted to build the project, and as part of that project, he wanted to knock down the bank and the theater. And what he did is, he went to the city, and he asked for a demolition permit in order to demolish the building. They found that there was no need for an environmental impact review, or, you know, for CEQA, because that demolition of the building wasn't actually gonna affect the environment. The problem is, the entire project, which that was only one phase of, was going to, and it was gonna require CEQA. And so, it fell under that, and it was gonna require a report. And so, what I'm suggesting in this case is, this is not just, as you tried to simplify it in the staff report, this isn't just about, hey, there's six courts here, and all they wanna do is switch out the owner. It used to be Palisades, now it could be him or someone else. That's not what this is about. This is about, he has already expressed his intent, and you can confirm with him, that they want to do pickleball eventually. You can't piecemeal this. You can't just look at, "Let's change the operator first," and that's okay, that doesn't require any kind of environmental impact. What they intend to do, the facts that have already been put out, is they wanna operate pickleball. This is why everybody's complaining about the parking, the ingress, the egress, the access, who's gonna like, check in the people? You don't have all of these facts, but that's what the big project is about. They want to pull the wool over your eyes and have you just address this one little portion of, "Let's just change who's the operator of these six courts." But you can't ignore the fact that you have stuff in front of you that suggests, "This is a bigger project." That's where you're going to foul of the law, and I really ask you to consult with your city attorney, maybe your outside legal counsel, and take a look at this. You can't piecemeal this. The law is clear.
Thank you. Speaker?
Good evening. My name is Robert Struthers. I was a lawyer for 25 years, and I was an investment banker for 10. And I've never been more confused in my life. I've been listening to this, and I see more red herrings than in a boat full of fish. This is about a guy who had a tennis club with two parcels of land, failed to renew his lease on one of the parcels, and a replacement tenant, after the first guy was denied a right of first refusal, turned down a right of first refusal, was leased to someone else. Someone else who runs a tennis club. I'm a member of TTC. I played tennis since I was 16. Sean Abdali runs a damn good tennis club. And that six-court club is financially viable as it is. And that's all that's in front of this council. Someone says, he's rumored to be heading for pickleball. I heard a rumor, he's gonna build an 85-story condo tower. And I can probably show you pictures of that. The flyover was nice, they're calling it evidence. Of what? Where's the evidence come from? I saw a picture of two guys that looked like they were in a Scorsese movie, testifying about Sean's skills in running a tennis club, the best I could hear, with a, with a kind of a, an overlay of stuff. Bottom line is, in my view, it's been tennis for 50 years, it's gonna be tennis going forward indefinitely, according to the proposal in front of the council. It can't be anything else without an approval coming back. And it's clearly within the authority of the planners, and the authority of the council to say, "No. No, because no." I also play pickleball. It's fun. It's not evil, it's not denigrating the tennis, it doesn't ruin the world, it doesn't make bad noises. It's a good sport, and it's fun. But that's not the proposal. The proposal is to run a separately-owned, six-court tennis facility under the management of somebody who's one of the best tennis court operators in the country, and is viable. And that's all that's in front of you.
Please, quiet, please.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hello, Kevin Prebe, and we just moved here a year ago for this club. I'm from Park City, Utah. Everything got overbuilt there, there's no room, the tennis, everything is kinda fading away. But we're here for a reason. We're here to play tennis. We play tennis, we do play pickleball also. But this club is extremely well-run, TTC. I mean, how many people did, how many young kids went to the US Open?
Five.
Five. Five US Open kids, trained. We get to watch these kids over there, which is unbelievable. Like, we go to that club, we eat lunch, we sit there, we watch the training, we watch the coaches, we watch the money the parents spend on these kids. He's gonna take a bunch of them down there. They're gonna be on six courts down there. It's awesome. People in the Hyatt are gonna get to walk down there, they're gonna get to mingle and watch these kids play. Say, "Hey, I saw that kid down there, he's going to the US Open next year." This is tennis, we're here for tennis. I came to this meeting for tennis. Half of it's pickleball we're talking about, and that's not what we're here to talk about. If it goes to the next step, we go to the next step. But thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
Hi, my name's Kevin Craig. I'm not from Newport Beach, from Northern California, I'm vice president of UTR. That's the gold standard in tennis rating worldwide. And I understand the emotion, I love emotional tennis players. I'm not saying the world's changing, but there is some intrusion of pickleball coming in, everybody knows that. But my interest here is tennis. So, back May, June of this last year, heard about this situation with the six courts. UTR as a company, we're interested in our pro tennis tour, our pro senior tour, a bunch of other marquee events that we put in Newport Beach. Regardless how you feel about Sean, he has put UTR on the map in Newport Beach. People travel all over the world to come in and play our PTT events, and our qualifier events for PTT. They do have pickleball at that club. It's a difficult situation for me at UTR, because it's very loud. Some of you play pickleball. Obviously, a lot of you don't like pickleball, but at the end of the day, I have to run a pro tour that's quiet, I have to run a pro senior tour that's quiet. So I entered into agreement with Sean for the next couple of years to run tennis at this facility. I'm not sure about all the rumors about pickleball at this facility, but for the next two years, this is my use here. So I have an agreement with him, I'm gonna be running our pro tour, our pro senior tour, and a bunch of high-end junior tournaments at these six courts. I understand the legacy of Palisade, but my agreement is only tennis, it is not pickleball. So I'm gonna make that clear here. I probably should've gone first to alleviate a lot of this, but that's my intent. So there will be no pickleball under my agreement for the next two years. Okay? Thanks.
Please, please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Your agreement is explicit.
Please, please keep it down. If you'd like to speak, you may come up to the dice. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Abraham Mohazy. I run those tennis tournaments over at the tennis club here in Newport Beach. And those tennis tournaments bring in, like he said, athletes from all over the country here, but also from different countries as well. It's a greatly ran tournament. We've been doing it every single weekend for the last few years now. No weekends off, and definitely look forward to running it over at Palisades. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening. Ken Montgomery, resident of Irvine. My letter is in your packets, I'll be very brief. Planning commission's job is to approve good plans and to reject inadequate plans. If they wanna have a tennis club on those six courts, have them submit a plan with a clubhouse, a proper entrance, restrooms. You're gonna have employees there, you're not gonna have them walking 10-minute round trip to go to the restroom. It's a totally inadequate plan. Wheelchair access needs to be provided. Have them provide a plan with a clubhouse. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lawrence Sherwin. I'm a Newport Beach resident, I've been a member of Palisades for a large number of years. I guess, I don't know exactly what the planning commission does, but he just said it all. It's hard to call something a club that has no restroom facilities, and no water, and no ability to screen members coming in. So I agree. Get a plan, and then let us talk about it.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. I live at 1612 Santiago Drive in Newport. I just heard the last few speakers herald the events that are gonna be hosted on those six courts. As far as I read, and I read through all the documentation, the use permit only permits two events outside the club activities per year. So I would challenge the folks who just spoke up, and mentioned all these events that they've contracted for, how are you gonna do that? It seems logical to me they need to come to you first and get the use permit changed. And so, this was again, off the cuff, I didn't expect to contribute to this night, this evening's discussion, but I just, I think that's a pretty obvious question.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I was not planning to speak tonight. I think most of you probably know me. I'm probably the most hated person in Palisades today. But I would like to address a few things, starting with Ms. Martin here, who's been slandering me for the last few months with our very well-known lobbyist, David Ellis. First of all, Mr. Thomas Duddy, thank you for your membership. You and your wife are members of my club, so we appreciate that. I hope that, or your wife, I should say, for thank you for that. I reached out to you a couple of times to speak to you about some of your objections and your concerns, but unfortunately, I have not had the chance to speak to you. I know your counsel also was repeatedly contacted by my counsel to sit down, to talk about the concerns, and that was not also met. I've also spoke to Eric Davidson, the owner of the club, a couple of times when he was in Paris, I'm assuming he's still in Paris, and I suggested for us to meet, talk about any concerns, and to have a cohesive environment for both of our operations. I did not get any sort of, I guess, he was inclined in doing that. I reached out to two of his friends that are also my acquaintances, one of his, is a friend of mine, you guys all probably know Neil Grover, and also Karsten Hoffman I called, who is very good friends with Eric, asking him for their help to sit down with Eric. I've also spoken to our mayor, Mayor Noah Bloom, whose father is a longtime member at Palisades and loves Palisades, and suggests he offered to be a person to sit in the middle and talk about the concerns, and that was also declined. But I'd like to address a few things. The video that you saw, that obviously was very embarrassing. You all know, because you've been part of this mess between the landowners of my existing club that I'm leasing, and I've been a victim of it. And I, just to make the record clear, I did not cheat my landlords. As a matter of fact, the managing owner of my landlord was introduced to Mr. Stugard, and he also talked about maybe his recommendations, and I wouldn't do that if I owed him any money. And during arbitration, which ended a couple of weeks ago, there was a forensic accountant, very reputable, that testified, yes, I did make a mistake in my reporting of percentage rent, 28 cents. Guilty, 28 cents. I will pay, I will pay my interest on that. Regarding Palisades, I am first a tennis person.
If you could just speak to the body.
I am, I am first a tennis person. I love tennis. Tennis is my love and soul and first love, and it will never change. But times have changed. I don't own the property of my existing club on PCH. I also don't own the property at the Hyatt in north of Palisades. They're demanding more money. We are faced with high-rise buildings and other developments to take over our clubs. I only went and negotiated with the Hyatt Hotel, because after speaking to the general manager of Hyatt, I learned that they were not in a contractual agreement, and I did not wanna interfere with it. Many have interfered with my contractual agreement, one being Mr. Duddy's partner, who was the third party, which I won't embarrass his name, because that's not my style, to, he came and tried to interfere with my agreements with my landlords. I will answer any of the questions that you like. I'm not hiding pickleball. As a matter of fact, I met with city staff, with Mr. Lee, Mr. Campbell, our head of the fire department, and I believe with the building department, to talk about what it would take if we were to ever put pickleball here. And they gave me a long list, lots of requirements, they corresponded with my attorney, for what will be needed. There'll be, for example, just to name a few, there'll be a parking study, traffic study, noise study, and probably a couple more. These studies, and the process takes about, maybe a year, probably more. So yes, I took the risk of leasing this property, but I knew how much I can make with it with our tennis academy. No, we're not gonna have our members go there and check in. We have 15 tennis courts in our existing facility. But our academy will probably go there, we'll have lessons there. We'll have up to 12 individuals playing a tournament every weekend at one time. 12. Six courts, times two, 12 people. I've also went to Eric Davidson, by the way, to you members that need to know, and I said, "Eric, let's keep the club as one. Let's call it as Palisades Tennis Club, but I will operate the pickleball, and I will pay for the rent for the pickleball. And I will offer your members, I will offer your existing members $69 a month for adding pickleball, your existing members, not new ones. I also offered to hire all his pros that maybe would lose a job, to come to our courts, and they can work there. Their longtime pro, that was there longer than anyone else, who is no longer there, sent me a text saying that if Ken was around, you guys would've worked it out. I'm not here to destroy Palisades. If I wanted to bring people to show a crowd, I could've brought 1,600 people out here from our club. I didn't do that, because we're one community. We're a tennis community and a pickleball committee, and we're not, we're not competing."
Thank you. And if we have more questions, we'll call you back up, okay?
I will answer any questions that you like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Denise Oberman, I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I think you've, you've heard a lot of good points from the residents here. I just wanna say that fundamentally, just a few things. Fundamentally, the economics of the proposal required that there be 24 or 20-something pickleball courts to be there as the use. And there was a lot of other surround sound. I was not privy to all of the specifics. But I will say that I do agree, as a businessperson, that there was, and continues to be, an underlying economic premise that requires there to be that volume of capacity and of use in order for the applicant's proposal to be viable. So, does the planning commission need to care about that or not? Secondly, that's gonna be up to you. But what I think we're gonna end up with is, and what we have now, is we have two incomplete uses. They don't fulfill any of the conditions. All these things have been brought up. The access questions, we've talked about parking. By what is going on now, there is not an ability to provide adequate parking in a feasible manner, certainly not ADA compliant. The access to either of these clubs, as currently on the table, is not ADA compliant. The applicant's proposal does not address the need for electric and water utilities, which do not exist. So, there does need to be some construction component to this project the applicant has applied for, or it is not going to be complete. So, I would urge you to consider that. And there is no way that this business can go into operation and be viable without some construction component. So, best-case scenario, the proposals that are out there are not complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Rita Zurcher, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and I went to Harbor High School- And I went to Harbor High School. And Newport Beach has a long, long tradition of tennis. In fact, Harbor High School probably, it's the only thing we ever won was in tennis. And tennis courts were installed at Harbor High in 1930, when it was first built. Same with Corona del Mar, there's like eight tennis courts there. And Palisades Tennis Club kind of reflects that tradition of tennis in Newport Beach. It's the last club that really people walk into and go, wow, this is cool. Unfortunately, losing those six courts, we've had to curtail not only a lot of our, you know, match times and stuff and move them around, but we have charity events, we have the Adoption Guild, we did the breast cancer, and we've had to curtail the number of peoples that we could, you know, have. And so that really hurts the club. It also hurts the food and beverage people. It hurts, we have a massage lady, and the people who work the front desk, and also our coaches, and the loss of the junior tennis program, which was always great. It was on courts one to six. The other thing with the parking is it's always been a problem, especially on weekends. And many of us, if you came a little late on a Saturday or Sunday, we had valet parking that was kind of contingent on having, leaving your keys in the car, and then one of the staff would move the car into a parking space and put the keys in the clubhouse. And it was a great system. And then the rest of us parked down below. And I timed it seven-minute walk. You know, that's, it's not bad, but some people really have a hard time with that. And we make a joke, well, you can warm up before your game, but that parking situation. Anyway, I was a member at TTC for several years, and I loved seeing the UTR, you know, that was great, the tournaments, they had great players, but we ended up having like three courts for members, and then pickleball came around. Anyway, long story short, I don't like this. But another point about the pickleball is the Champion Management Group Incorporated, they filed for a trademark on August 1st, 2023, and the trademark is, I can't read it. I'm pickled. I'm pickled. So it kind of, probably they do eventually want to have pickleball. And as far as UTR there, the traffic is going to be really hideous.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Thomas Duddy. I live at 1701 Port Newport, or I'm sorry, Port Westmore, Newport Beach, California. I feel necessary to talk, but the reason I filed the appeal was exactly because of what's taking place tonight, that there was confusion, there was concern about what may or may not have been happening. And I felt that everybody had a story to tell and that we needed to get it out in the open to discuss it. So really, it was, it was really about trying to get transparency, making sure there was compliance and accountability on whatever the process was that needed to take place. Ultimately, we want to have a good partnership. We want to have a good neighbor. We want a good relationship with whoever short-term or long-term runs the facility next to us. And I'm glad that we're having the discussion tonight, and I certainly appreciate the time that you're giving us to have and discuss these important issues to the city of Newport Beach and the tennis community and the pickleball community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Valentina, and I'm Sean's wife. And, you know, I wasn't planning to speak either, but I feel it's necessary for multiple reasons. But first and foremost, I'll start with the very bare bones and basic. I was a tennis player, albeit not that great, but according to Sean, and I wish I had better tennis coaches, that we thank God do now. And when I was a kid, I didn't have that upbringing. I had, I just learned how to, you know, play. When I met Sean, and he said he was a tennis advocate, a tennis lover, that really bonded me to him. And now here we are, two kids later, married, happily married. My two children play only tennis. And when we first got TTC, it was 24 tennis courts. And I looked at Sean and I said, this place is scary because number one, we only have how many members? 97? How are we going to pay our rent to the landlord? We have a growing family. How are we going to survive? And Sean just said, trust me, I am going to reinvigorate the tennis community with junior tennis. I am going to bring tennis back to life in Newport Beach. And this was in 2015. So fast forward, he did an incredible job, and I saw the people showing up at the club, and I saw we were able to write our checks to our landlord for our lease. When COVID hit, that was the first time I'd ever seen Sean stressed because we had to shut down, completely shut down. And that's when we were like, how are we going to support ourselves? How are we going to pay our rent? Then pickleball was introduced, and it was sort of like something necessary in order to stay alive. But then not only were we staying alive thanks to pickleball, we heard it was saving other people's lives. So people were happy, people were recreating, people were outdoors. COVID really did a number on everybody. Now Sean, being a tennis purist, his chosen father being Nick Bolitieri, and I'm sorry, that's not his official birth name, birth name, but his chosen father, who said, please use my name Bolitieri and keep the legacy going, is an honor. And I truly, truly am here to tell you, I am a tennis lover. I love that my children are playing tennis. I love that they're growing up around tennis, and I love that we have an opportunity at this location at Hyatt to reinvigorate as well, once again, junior tennis with our amazing tennis staff, our amazing tennis coaches, UTR. And I want to bring my kids there, and I want to see Palisades there, and I really truly hope I can be an interlocutor, which means just a mediator or somebody to bring peace. And let's do charity together. We raised over $2 million at my club in pickleball charity fundraisers. I'm here for you all. I want to be with you. I want to be a part of your community. I know Sean does, too. We just need a chance. We have a young family. So I ask that you please understand this is about tennis.
Thank you.
I want it to be about tennis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Good evening. Mauricio Bertoldi, Costa Mesa. I'll be brief. I'll save you the, I'll make up the minutes that have been chewed away left and right. In a way, I feel sorry for you to have to go through all this because, you know, we have one side that says it's all about tennis, but it brings up statistics about how pickleball is growing every day. We have an operator that has operated unpermitted pickleball courts on tennis courts. So I know we're, it's all about free enterprise, you know? We're not here to, to limit ownership, private ownership, private enterprise, and we will undermine economics principles that reign in our country. But let me tell you something. It is not just about tennis, and it's not just about pickleball. It's just about a resolution that was granted under certain principle, under certain circumstances. They were safeguarding safety, and they were ensuring that the operation would be successful, and it has been for 50 years. That's one aspect. The second aspect, which is more important, is to, I know it's hard to bring up moral aspects in business transactions. I know it's not easy to, to make them work together, okay? But this is really a particular case. This is not just a mere economic transaction. This is not mere running a business. This is, this involves, involves, the genesis of all this is about, about our community. It's about what's the best solution? What's the best outcome for the community? And the answer is one operator that runs it in a certain way instead of, instead of different other ways. We clearly are going to introduce a complication here that on the surface might work for a while, but in the long run, with the premises that we have on the table right now, can only worsen and can only cause more, more distress. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Eric Longaparte. I'm not a member of the Palisades Tennis Club or the other tennis club. I'm here to bring an issue forward that is just presently taking place because of the dispute, I guess you would call it, between the two parties regarding this matter. There is no, and I brought it to the attention of the city already, and also the US Attorney and ADA at federal level, there is no ADA compliant parking anywhere near the entrance to the Palisades Tennis Club, mostly due to this dispute. I happen to be the son of an 85-year-old former tennis player who would still be playing today, for he still worked good enough to play, but she does work at the Palisades Tennis Club, and she is being afforded special parking privileges due to that issue. Other people who are, have a handicap parking or license plate are not. They have attempted to park at the Hyatt's handicap parking, which is a great distance. If you look at the map, you can see how far of a walk it would be. It's definitely not ADA compliant. And they've been told if they park there, they'll be towed. Regardless of the dispute, I'm not weighing in on the dispute itself. I think the city, it's been brought to their attention. I think the city would have some issue and some responsibility to ensure, as they are required under federal law, to ensure that that, those things are taken care of. I'm not a lawyer. I played one on TV before in my past career as investigative journalist, but that issue, I think, is something that need to be brought to the attention of. It's brought to the city, like I said, and it's this dispute with both parties, they could at least make sure that, you know, 85-year-old grandmothers, like my mom, who can't walk that far, and the federal law says that they shouldn't have to. And I think they should at least take that into account and at least show some kind of compassion for people in that situation, regardless of their dispute regarding this entire matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. I'd like to give the applicant a chance to respond if they'd like to clarify anything. Mr. Matzler.
Chair Harris, Commissioners, I'll be real brief. You had a long night. I'm only speaking just so that you don't think that I hadn't thought about the piecemealing thing. I thought about it and didn't respond to it because it's, it's wrong. But you don't have to listen to me. Ask your staff, ask your city attorney, but they've got it wrong on piecemealing. I teach classes on SEQA. This isn't it. Thank you for your time.
Just a minute. Go ahead. One minute. Thank you.
Secretary Harris, thank you. Members of the Commission, Michael Shauna Feld on behalf of the appellant, Tom Duddy. I think Tom, my client, that was quick. Man, that's quick as five minutes I've ever experienced. I'll be brief. Not that brief, but. My client, Tom Duddy, pretty much summed it up very well. He says he just wants us to be a full-throated, robust discussion, but you can't have that discussion in a proceeding that's sequenced the way it is. This is, I think there are three things at least that came through on the record through all this testimony. And again, pickleball seems like a great thing. I might take it up myself, but it's clear that that's what this is going to be, and the testimony, I think, makes that quite obvious. Two, there are findings that cannot be made on this tonight. You cannot make finding A3 because right now we see that the 78 spots are not being made available to both courts, and we cannot make condition of approval number three, which has been discussed for the same reason. These, that, those conditions and those findings of fact can't be made, and they're very, they're linchpin ones. They kind of invade the rest of the findings of fact that are referred to throughout. So they just can't be made. And why not? Because it feels like this is the wrong step to try to shoehorn this kind of fragmented operation with a pickleball coming up into UP 1697. It's not working, okay? What would work is for the applicant to come back with a proper bundle of entitlements for what they really want to do. And that's where we can make a real good, open debate about impacts, about, you know, what the objectives are. I think we're quite clearly fragmented on that. We're kind of seeing things with blinders on in the approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I will close the public comment. Thank you all for participating tonight. Does the commission have any questions for?
If I may, because I know the piecemealing seems to be a repeated issue, so I did want to kind of hone in a little bit deeper on that. The, you know, the specific case that came out was the California Supreme Court decision that was Laurel Heights Improvement Association versus the Regents of the UC. So there's really a two-prong test, and you look at whether future expansion needs to be contemplated as part of a project. And I think that's the first prong, and I think once you hit that prong and really analyze what's in front of this body today, the answer is no, because pickleball is not what's contemplated. Pickleball is prohibited under this, this proposed modification to the CUP. So I would agree with the members of the public if pickleball was going to be authorized, but unambiguously, they would have to come in for additional land use entitlements. Those land use entitlements and SEQA analysis will take some time, and in the interim, tennis is established in there and would continue to be authorized. The other SEQA analysis or piece of this is that parking has consistently been held not to be a SEQA impact, and there was a recent decision that came out of San Gabriel that reiterated that. So to the extent that we're talking about piecemealing as it pertains to parking, then I think that we need to not consider that as part of the analysis because it cannot be. One of the third things that I heard was that the use permit, as it is established, requires a single operator. I did not read that or understand that in the prior use permit, and so I did, I don't agree with that piece of what was proposed by the appellant. Thank you.
Can we take, should I offer questions for staff now, or should I close the public comment and then if the, if the Planning Commission has some?
Yeah, I would close the public hearing at this point. I think we've.
Okay. Any, any other questions for applicants or anyone? I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Any questions of staff or anything you'd like to bring up now and start the discussion? Commissioner Bartow?
I think you just addressed it, but first I'd like to thank Mr. Moser for identifying I was on the wrong condition page. That's correct. The other thing he brought up regarding finding C, which I think you were just addressing, but just to put a finer point on it, he said that regarding finding C, no changes of the original conditions. Condition 11 in the 1973 permit said that all the conditions of the lot split had to be maintained, fulfilled concurrently. And then he mentioned that there's a missing page. Does anybody have that missing page to? Perfect. Can you address the point that Mr. Moser made?
I can speak to a piece of it. I mean, I did look at the, the two different applications that were before the body. One was a use permit, and the other was the lot split. And I would say that that condition should have been incorporated into the use permit. And so it looked like there were two separate applications at the time, and I think it would have been appropriate to incorporate that condition of approval into the use permit application.
And was, does number 11 not accomplish that?
Is there any way to project it, or can we see? No.
It might be difficult for us to pull this up on this computer over here. It would take some time. During the discussion, during the testimony, I did pull up that, the minutes from that meeting from October 4th, 1973. Again, we had a use permit that we've been discussing here on the agenda. The next item on the agenda was the parcel map that split the two parcels. And so you see the first page of the minutes for that item on that in your packet. The second page goes on to indicate conditions four, five, six, seven, and eight. Condition four deals with water and sewer lines. Condition five speaks to water storm runoff. Conditions. runoff, conditions six deals with public utility easements to the City of Newport Beach, number seven deals with vehicular access rights to jamboree being relinquished, again, those conditions are all really not relevant to the use here. Condition number eight is an interesting one, it indicates, and I'll, I'll read it, that the document, that a document satisfactory to the city attorney and the director of community development shall be recorded, which guarantees that the two parcels will be maintained for the duration of the lease as a single development. Use of parcel two for off-street parking and perpetual access to parcel one shall be maintained. Couple things with that, you know, clearly, this condition kind of contemplated the two parcels working together, that access and off-street parking would be provided on these lots, access is provided through a recorded easement, and that's really not in dispute here. It does indicate that, you know, that the, the guarantee the two parcels be maintained for the duration of the lease as a single development, and I think that has occurred through the lease, and right now, there is no lease for the second parcel. So I think we're in, we're in a circumstance that the 1973 Planning Commission didn't envision, you know, the lease is expired, and now what do you do? Well, we're handling that now, and I don't think that we can be held to this condition under these circumstances without a lease, so these are my initial thoughts on this condition, but it, it obviously clearly indicates that the Planning Commission at the time felt that this was really one use, and they were trying to keep it one use. Those circumstances have changed, and that's why we're here today. I don't know if that answers your question, but it, that gives us some, some indication of what was missing in the record here for the, for the re-subdivision, the parcel map.
It does answer the question as to what the language was, I'm still trying to contemplate what the implications of the, the use permit are, but, okay.
On the current application, would that have required a change to the condition, a different condition with that change?
As we evaluated this application, again, for continuation of the existing use, which obviously with a separate operator, you know, we didn't see that as being in violation of any of the conditions of approval, and so we didn't, at that point, require an amendment to the permit at all, and we proceeded under the staff approval path, because, you know, as, as the findings indicate, you know, there, there is a path for the director to operate without a public hearing, and we took that path, because we felt it was consistent with the zoning, consistent with the use permit, and all the facts that are required pursuant to the code were met, meaning the environmental review is still satisfied, and any specific conditions were also still satisfied, and we still believe that today.
I know we're done discussion, if I had one other question, could I ask a question of the audience, of the applicant's representative, real quick, single question, or are we out of that, out of that period?
We could reopen the public hearing for that limited purpose.
Okay. I direct this to Mr. Matzler.
I'll reopen the public hearing for some questions.
Does the lease to the operator of, so many different things going on with this win, but to Mr. Bolter?
Champion.
Champion, thank you. Does the lease to Champion obligate them to convert to pickleball use?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? I'll, again, close the. Back to discussion, any other questions or clarifications of staff right now, anyone has? I have a couple, if that's okay. I'd love to, I wish we could see that language, I'm still kind of spinning on that. If parcel one has no parking, and haven't provided it, and they're out of use, right, does that then, I mean, I think we kind of went over this, does that affect parcel two's permit if they were approved to move forward? Because aren't they both under the same use permit?
Yes, both parcels are under the same use permit, and the use permit requires 78 parking spaces to be available for the entire tennis facility, and the staff approval does mandate that, the use permit does contemplate overflow parking onto the broader Hyatt parcel, and we feel there are 78 spaces available through the staff approval currently as it's crafted, and overflow parking is being allowed, based on the testimony today, and based upon actions that we've seen, you know, there is overflow parking that could occur on the Hyatt, obviously they have to pay the parking rates that the Hyatt requires, and we believe that that arrangement has, obviously not cemented with any kind of a lease arrangement, you know, is, is still sufficiently consistent with the use permit to warrant the recommendation that we have today.
Thank you. Yeah, just to, sorry, I'm going to ask for a second to read this if I can.
Yeah, what you're seeing on the screen is, is what I read, these are the conditions from the re-subdivision, the parcel map, and I read condition eight, the one that's more relevant.
So, what I'm reading there is through the duration of the lease, as you explained, so that the lease is expired, that wouldn't apply on the first part, the last sentence there, I'm, it almost, who could have foresaw the predicament we're in, but that the use of parcel two for off-street parking and perpetual easement parcel one shall be maintained, which you argue it is with the parking spots allotted, even if there's not a contractual agreement in place to use them.
Yes, at this time, and I think that if there was no contractual arrangement, and all the parking for Palisades is on the larger parking lot towards Back Bay Drive, you know, that is a changed circumstance, that is a possibility, you know, if there is no lease arrangement here. And so, again, we feel that the staff approval provides for the parking consistent with these permits, and if it isn't available through a lease, and that they have to park on the Hyatt parcel at a further distance, and that is unfortunate, it's inconvenient, it is everything that Palisades wouldn't like it to be, but the use permit also contemplates overflow parking in that parking lot, and, and, and so it, rather than saying that they're in complete violation of the permit, you know, I think we would have to examine that and make sure, you know, it is it still consistent with the permit. Again, that's not the question in front of us today, but it might be a question in front of us tomorrow, if there is no lease arrangement. You know, my initial thought is, is that we need to make some accommodation under these very unique circumstances, because this is the only time in my, you know, 35-year career where we've dealt with two parcels and one use permit, and they're actually owned by separate, and now they're going to be separated by operation, it's a very, very unique circumstance, and so, under these conditions, you know, I think what we need to do is, is provide some sort of accommodation, and the key thing for us is that, is there parking for this use, that, so that it's not creating a detriment to the community, and that's the basic tenets of a use permit. And I think, while inconvenienced it may be to park in that larger parking lot near Back Bay Drive, if that's the end result of this, then I think we're going to have to make some sort of accommodation to allow continued use at Palisades, because we want continued use at Palisades. We're hopeful that there's an agreement, so that there's a much more convenient parking arrangement, and I think after this discussion and debate, hopefully there'll be additional conversations that will lead to some resolution of the dispute.
Does, do you know if the easement that parcel two holds allows full access to parcel one?
It's our understanding that it does provide vehicular access through parcel two, actually, it goes through.
No, no, I'm saying two to one, I'm sorry.
Two to one.
Can two use one to get through the club? Do they have, is, does their easement or their access agreement allow them use of actually, like, you know?
The easement document that I'm familiar with is for vehicular access through parcel one to parcel two, and I have not seen any, or I'm not aware of any easement rights or access rights from parcel two to parcel one, meaning going through parcel one to the tennis facility, I'm not familiar with that.
You know, I'm not, obviously, interested, I mean, you know, it's not our prerogative to judge what people can charge for a lease, with who they can rent to, you know, but I'm also caught with, if these six courts came in by theirsel, by themselves, as constructed today, with the access and with everything they have, would they get approved? So I'm, I'm a little bit torn, to be honest, I'm just going to be honest to everyone, I'm, I'm kind of torn on this thing, where I don't want to violate someone's private property rights, but I also don't know if this is a, you know, an adequate or a viable project that we would ever approve, I don't know if we would, or the city would, by, you know, by use, I don't know if, you know, you rented out the back, your patio of your restaurant, and somebody said, oh, I'm just going to rent that back part, and coming from the back door, we'd say, great, you got it, you parked it, we're happy, so I, I mean, maybe I'm missing on that comparison, and I'd be happy to be corrected, but I just, I'm just torn, I'm totally torn, anyway, my two cents.
If, if I can make a suggestion, with the body, like, proposed modification to that condition three associated with the parking that provides more assurance that Palisades would have parking available, we can certainly propose language there, if that's something the Commission feels comfortable with.
Thank you for the suggestion, so, to, to me, and just trying to figure this out, like the rest of us, I'm looking at the totality of it, the use permit, it's parking, but it's also events that they're going to share, and there's other kind of operational impossibilities that we're kind of setting up, I just don't want to set them up to fail, and then everyone comes back here soon, because now, we've made it impossible for, you know, these two acrimonious groups to, like, fulfill the obligations in their use permit, so, I feel like, if we're going to start adding more conditions, then we should kind of write up, you know, all of them, you know, go back and look at them all and figure out, it's like, all right, this is how you operate, this is how you operate, this is how many parking spaces, this is how many, because it doesn't sound like these, you know, because it's an acrimonious, like, parties, that they're not going to, like, play nicely in sharing their events, because if it says there's two, then like, maybe one thinks they get both, and maybe one thinks they should be shared equally, but, I mean, that's, my thought is that, if we do want to approve it, then we need to address kind of all the conditions, and really put together kind of a whole new use permit, if we're trying to duct tape it all together, otherwise, it's going to fall apart, like, right after night.
Yeah, I feel I've spoken more during this planning commission than I have in any planning commission combined. I guess, this really strikes me, because what we're looking at here is, obviously, an acrimony situation, with a lot of competing interests, and as I, as I'm reviewing it, I'm trying to evaluate it within the context of the planning commission, which is land use decision, and kind of what we're seeing here, at least what I'm seeing here, is a split piece of property that was always contemplated to be a single piece of property, and, you know, I am a, on one hand, I look at a club that apparently had an opportunity to maintain a single lease, and through things that are, for reasons that are unclear to me, straight economics, or just missed opportunity, or the way it was, you know, conveyed, it, it comes across as, they didn't want to change the use, and they did, and I don't know if that's an accurate representation, but because of that, when I first saw this, I looked at this, and I said, well, how is parcel one going to maintain parking? They have no contractual ability to maintain it, because they lost their lease, or, and they didn't renew it, so, that was my first thought reviewing this, and as we look at this, we end up with these six kind of satellite courts, that, again, if they came to us and said, we want to build six courts in the middle of a parking lot, we're going to have a, you know, bathroom over here, and, you know, you know, drinking fountain over there, and we don't have any electricity, I don't think we'd approve it as a club, and so, but at the same time, we've got a thing here, and just letting it lay foul, it doesn't make any sense either, so it, it's just, I understand, I understand what the staff is having to deal with, and trying to maintain, you know, a, a broken situation, and I, I guess, as I'm trying to evaluate it, what we ended up with is kind of a half-baked solution, that I don't, I don't know how to, as, as Commissioner Langford said, you know, tape it all together, so I, I, I'm just trying to make sense of it. So, I guess that's my discussion contribution, I'm frustrated by the situation, so. Any thoughts?
And, and I think staff and Director Jurges were right to approve it at the, at the time they approved it, from a staff perspective, because you would imagine that this could be an easy, professional relationship, where, you know, a different operator is just operating these six courts in like a very, you know, in a way that's respectful, they're sharing parking, like, everything's easy, but in light of kind of recent events, and knowing that it's not going to be, you know, one group, you know, there's no meeting of the minds, it doesn't seem, and it's going to be hard for us to, someone's going to have to kind of referee that, and that's, we're kind of put in that position a little bit, where we need to put it in place now, or else it's just going to bubble up later. But yeah, I guess my thought was, you know, at the time, it was a justified call, but now, it seems a little different to me. Just thinking about it.
Well, any other thoughts or emotion, adjust the condition, Commissioner Salina Lowery, anything to add, I mean, I, you know?
Yeah, oh, great, thanks. Obviously, it's a confusing and emotional issue, I agree with Commissioner Langford in that it'd be tough for us to try to piecemeal a bunch of conditions together, and not miss something. Obviously, I think the key, the issues are parking, access, perhaps events, I don't know if that's enough, if that's, if that's everything, if we even try to do that tonight, or do we let staff work with the applicant and the appellant to try to figure things out? I don't, I'm not sure quite what the best approach is to take at this point.
It's kind of, I guess, the direction I was looking a little bit, maybe, I mean, I hate to say, delay it another, another, you know, till the next meeting or after, but I agree, I'm with all my colleagues here, this is, this is confusing, at the first, I thought it's just a simple case of, you have a property owner, he presented lease terms on an expired lease, they didn't want it, so, he can go wherever, and I'm usually always going to side with the, the property owner, and, and what the market's going to bear on that lease, and, and, you know, our, our purview here, our direction here, is really just looking at it for land use, but there are some questions here I have on that, and it's just, it's, as clear as I look at, and, and I'm going to side with property rights almost all the time, I am a little bit confused, confused, not the word, but I do have questions on both sides on my, as I, as I look at this, and I look at this from 1973, and it's, I, seeing that extra page puts a little bit of questions in my mind, outside of, it's very cool that John Wayne actually was in front of the Planning Commission in 1973, but, according to the minutes here, but outside of that, it really does, it really does give me more questions than, than I thought as I read over this, that it was maybe more of a simple, hey, the current, the current person who had signed the lease doesn't want new terms, and they've worked, and they tried to work, didn't work, so a new person came in, so, I, I would say that, I'm kind of, Dave would say, and Dave just, in, in terms of, get another, this is just, I, I just don't know where we're going to, where we're all going to fall, I don't, I, I would have staff to kind of look at this a little more, I really, I just wish there was a more meeting of the minds between the parties, but I can't wish that, so, I mean, you could, we could rule on this and just, and just let the cards fall where they may, or we could just let, maybe take another couple of weeks with. they may, or we could just let, uh, maybe take another couple of weeks with staff to, to kinda work over some concerns that we have here. Those are my thoughts.
Well, and I, and obviously I respect that, I just, I think it's, it's, it's very apparent that the conditions as are written now are simply inadequate. I mean, they just don't address so many concerns that have been brought up tonight by so many groups. So, you know, again, we either try to patch them up tonight or we let, you know, the people who are more, who are better at this try to, try to work it out and, and see if we can't bring it back when it's more complete. That's my thoughts.
I guess as a final thought to, in relation to what you guys are saying, I, I think as I look at the 1973 use permit, I don't think it's, I don't think it fits our current situation without a, you know, to my mind, unless parcel one and two were operating the parking lot or occupying the parking lot together and realistically even accessing through, I, I don't know how practical that is, but, but at a minimum, the parking is clearly called out. I think that, I think for both of them to have their use permit, I think they, they need to figure that out. Cuz from my perspective, I don't, I don't think they're following it. And I, I, I think you offer, you came to, I think, a not unreasonable effort to try to satisfy that, but I, I, I think it's pretty apparent, especially with one side locking the other out from the, the lo, the near-term parking, which is clearly called out. To me, that, that feels like a, it feels like they're not satisfying that. Being said, uh, I don't think the goal is to shut down either operation. I, I think, I think it would be good to have those courts in use with people that are paying to lease the land under the courts. So I, I, uh, I don't know if it would be, I don't know if we can add a condition to that effect, that they need to fulfill the obligations of, uh, number eight, uh, of the existing, of the, the subdivision. Uh, I, I don't know if that's something we wanna do or if we should maybe put it off another two weeks and address it at the next meeting. I, I, I'd look to the staff maybe for their thoughts on that idea or both, either of those ideas.
So, um, Secretary Harris, if I may, um, unless the, the commission wants to take a vote tonight, I, I suggest that we bring this back at the, the next commission meeting. We need time to figure it out too, um, unless one of the commissioners wants to go ahead and make a motion tonight. Um, other than that, then we, staff needs some time to work through this too.
Are there any specific conditions, guys, anyone can think of that we could add? Um, you know, now our suggestions, I mean, and, and any idea for a motion?
I'll make a motion to table to a time certain of the next planning commission, if that's in line with everyone's thoughts here.
Should we at least though discuss the, the things that they need to be working on?
Oh, yeah.
Rather than, okay.
I'll hold on that then.
Okay, I mean, I'll just start, obviously the parking. And, you know, we, we've talked about the idea of the Champions Club can't operate until they've worked out an agreement with Palisades on the parking is, as one idea. Um, again, I'll leave that to you guys to figure out. Um, I, I think another one is access. Um, that, that access at the back of court three is simply inadequate. Um, I think there's certainly options that the Champions Club could utilize. Um, this, I, this tournament schedule, it, I mean, it seems weird anyway that there's, that they're limited to two. Palisades has always done long, way more than two tournaments. Um, so, um, you know, I don't understand that condition in the first place, and so that should be discussed. Um, and again, I don't think we need to address pickleball cuz it's not being asked for and it's specifically prohibited, so I think we should just stop referencing that.
I agree with the pickleball thing. I mean, right now, we're just looking at tennis. If, if I'm not gonna look at pickleball and if that comes next year, that comes next year, but right now, it's, it's tennis, so that argument's just not gonna, gonna sway me. So it's gonna be specifically to land, this could, land use. I, I see both sides and, and, or at least I, 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 I understand their emotions and can feel for, for both sides here, but we're supposed to be specifically looking at land use and I think that's what we're trying to solve and solve too and, and agree with my colleagues here, if we can address those things, if staff can address some of these key issues, I think we could come up with a better, specific land use, um, um, base decision on our next meeting.
Secretary Harris, if I have-
Mr. Campbell, please. Yes. I'm hearing parking is an issue and, and clearly the use permit contemplated all 78 spaces to be on part, on, on the facility, if you will, um, and maybe a few off, if you will, but adjacent to it, but very proximate. Is that what the commission is looking for? Cuz, cuz without the Hyatt's, um, permission to allow that, that added use through some lease arrangement, you know, I think parking for Palisades is gonna be in the parking lot over, uh, near closure to Back Bay Drive. And, and we may not be able to come to resolution on that in a couple of weeks or ever. So, uh, you know, if the commission is looking for the parking for all the tenants to be right there in front, you know, we may not be able to achieve that.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I guess when I look at the permit, it seems to contemplate it. And since we're not changing the permit, I, I guess that's my, that's what I'm trying to address. How do we address that is really the question for staff.
We would like to have all the parking right up front there, consistent, and it's, it's the most consistent that, kind of variant of this, uh, or splitting of the clubs, it would be, right, the most consistent. Um, and, you know, we wanna avoid a circumstance where we're closing one down or they're not compliant. You know, I would probably rather live with, you know, an inconvenient parking arrangement before shutting any one down. Again, we're, the staff was moving this forward at a time, and obviously we've learned a lot in the last couple of weeks and since the appeal was filed. And so there is a lot to go through, as, as Director Juerges indicated, we need to go through these issues. Um, but I think that the reason I asked about parking is, you know, if, if the goal is to try to get all the parking right there, right in front, which I think everyone wants that, um, I don't think that, there, there may be a circumstance where it doesn't exist. And if we can't do it through the staff approval process, then there's gonna have to be an amendment filed, uh, where we have a, a whole new use permit come in and then we hammer all this stuff out and, and go forward, cuz there's no other, there's no other method other than to amend the use permit itself and then to split this up. And it's an unusual circumstance here.
I would hope that, I mean, the applicant has, has indicated that if he was allowed to operate the six courts, then the parking would be made available to the Palisades folks. So I would hope that, you know, that, that there's some kind of wording could be arranged in the conditions that would, you know, their use would be conditioned on the parking being granted to Palisades in whatever fashion, obviously. So, again, it's been stated by the applicant.
Um, yeah, if we're looking for direction for staff on writing this, I guess it would be to write it in a way contemplating two operators instead of just the single. So kind of write it, it's like, you know, share it amongst two, you know, if there are two operators, then this needs to occur. If there's two operators, then they each get one event per year or however many tournaments or whatever we're doing. Um, and so that we can do on our side. I think the operators can help us out by kind of resolving what they need to resolve amongst themselves. It sounds like if there's only gonna be 12 youth tennis players there at any given time, that is almost zero cars, if they're all under 16. So they certainly don't need 78 spots or whatever it is. So I'm hoping that both sides can figure out that. So, cuz I think Director Juerges was right at the beginning to approve this because if he, if he assumed, like we all would have, that everything was gonna go smoothly, then ever, they could have negotiated the terms of the tournaments themselves and everyone would have been happy. But if everyone's gonna kinda grab whatever they can for themselves, then the conditions can't be one in which, you know, one group is, is making it worse for the other group and vice versa. Cuz it's kind of shared responsibilities, that we need to be putting them on the right path together. And so I think we owe them clearer direction from planning commission.
And I, I guess I'd just say, to, to your point, I understand that, um, the, your goal was to maintain open clubs and my goal would also be have 16 fully operational courts. And my concern is that as I look at what we're looking, these, these permits, I'm concerned that weren't, that neither club with what's being proposed tonight is satisfying the permit. And, and I, I think both clubs need to be thinking about that. And, you know, they should think about the importance of working together on this because I, I think after the lease was split, I think it put kind of both, everybody in jeopardy under this permit. So I, I hope, I hope that isn't impossible to resolve, cuz if it is, that's, that's bad for everyone. So that would be my direction regarding parking.
Realistically, I think the December 7th is, um, if we're looking at a date certain to continue it to, then that would be my recommendation.
Okay, I'll, I'll change my motion to table to December 7th.
Do we have a second?
Table or continue, just to, yeah.
Sure, I'll-
Continued.
I'll second.
Wait a second. Call for vote. Thank you and thank you for your time, participation. Apologize there wasn't a adequate satisfaction. Can we take a five-minute recess? Call to, call to order, please? Thank you, thank you. Yeah, that's okay. Thank you all. Okay, um, we're moving on to the next item. I believe we have a recusal. Commissioner Langford?
Yes, Secretary Har- Harris, I will be recusing myself on this next item due to parcels owned by my employer within these zoning districts. So I'll see you after.
Okay, item number three, municipal code amendments related to short-term lodging, PA 2023, having 000116, citywide. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, good evening, Secretary Harris, members of the commission. My name is Jaime Muriel, I'm the planning manager for the community development department. Uh, this item here is code and local coastal program amendments related to short-term lodging. Uh, just to provide a little bit of background, uh, this item was really initiated by the city council back in May, um, through direction given to staff to work with the planning commission to identify opportunities to facilitate visitor accommodation within the mixed-use W2 and mixed-use CV 15th Street, mixed-use zoning districts. Uh, the city council also provided a number of considerations to take into account, including applicability to 20 or more units and their common ownership, ensuring that professional management is provided, uh, amenities are provided for the guests and that, um, the program doesn't result in any parking impacts to adjacent residential neighborhoods. Uh, so staff, um, brought the item back to the planning commission as a study session in June of this year. Uh, during that discussion, we shared that within those mixed-use zoning districts, um, we already allow for hotels, motels, timeshares as visitor accommodations through the approval of a conditional use permit. Uh, but what was missing is short-term lodging, and so there's really a missing opportunity there, um, that staff felt was maybe appropriate to help relocate some of the short-term lodging, which has been viewed as kind of a commercial use in residential districts, out of the residential neighborhoods and into the mixed-use districts. Uh, the direction we received from the commission was to return, uh, with recommendations. Uh, so tonight we have a number of amendments, uh, to our short-term lodging ordinance. Um, you know, the first is to allow short-term rentals in the mixed-use W2 and mixed-use CV zoning districts, and I have a few slides, I'll get into a little more detail, uh, but we did wanna take this opportunity to also update, um, some inconsistent definitions within the code transient, within our transient occupancy tax provisions, defined as 30 days or less. Uh, however, short-term lodging and bed and breakfasts was defined as 31 days or less, and so we just wanna bring those two terms, uh, to be consistent. And then there's some, uh, overall minor edits or revisions to the violations, suspensions, revocations and permit closures. Uh, but the key, uh, change there to identify is that currently, um, any short-term lodging permit holders who do not report any TOT into, uh, annual reporting periods, uh, their permit is automatically closed. However, they have the ability to reinstate their permanent, their permit. And under the code today, they have unlimited number of times to reinstated. And so really we're finding there's a lot of permit holders that aren't using the short-term lodging and that's preventing a lot of people on the waiting list from being able to obtain a permit. And so, uh, the revision there is to allow just the one-time reinstatement. Um, this graphic here just shows the two mixed-use districts that the city council identified. So these are the MUW2 and MUCV. Uh, the MUCV is really Canary Village shown in orange. Uh, the MUW2, there's a number of areas kinda spread out, but mainly McFadden Square, uh, Lido Village, um, the commercial districts on Babo Island and one little parcel up near Dover and Jamboree. Uh, as far as kind of the program that we would recommend, uh, and to implement the council direction, um, is to change the maximum cap that we have on short-term lodging today. So currently we have a cap of 1,550 permits citywide, uh, and, and that was a recent change that was adopted, even by this, the California Coastal Commission last year. And part of that was to protect our residential neighborhoods and, uh, kinda preserve housing units from being converted to commercial uses. Uh, so in order to maintain that cap, uh, we recommend breaking the cap into two separate, um, maximum caps. So within the mixed-use districts, we recommend a total of 75 permits. And then within residential districts, we recommend, uh, bringing that down to 1,475 so that in total, it's no more than 1,550. Each one of these caps would have their own waiting list. As far as eligibility, um, we would incorporate the requirement that a permit holder have to have at least 20 or more units within the same statistical area. Uh, on this graphic, you can see an excerpt of our statistical area map. Um, and so that's really intended to ensure that, um, there's accountability for the permit holder and it's, it's a lot easier for staff and county enforcement to work with one, uh, property owner who manages multiple permits rather than having to work with multiple, uh, separate property owners. Uh, another eligibility requirement is that the, yeah, convert any deed-restricted units that are intended to be for affordable housing. Then the last component is that there needs to be a management plan submitted to the community development department to ensure that, um, the permit holder acknowledges all the operational requirements, uh, for short-term lodging and also to ensure that they meet the eligibility requirements, uh, also to demonstrate the onsite amenities that they're providing for their guests. And then lastly, a parking management plan that includes ensuring any available onsite parking, uh, remains open and available for use for their guests. Uh, and so that concludes my presentation. Uh, staff's recommending adoption of the resolutions. Um, just to note that if the city council moves forward with the amendments, we would also have to submit the amendments to the California Coastal Commission for approval as well.
Thank you, Jaime, appreciate it. Uh, commissioners, any questions, staff?
I guess my question would be, is there anybody else we're gonna have questions of? Or is it just between staffs or it doesn't seem like there's much public going on?
Well, there'll be a public comment, we'll see and then-
Okay, okay, cuz I would, I do, I do have some questions, I just don't know where it's more appropriate.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm just curious where some of the things came from. Uh, the 20 units, um, in one statistic, oh, an owner has to own 20 units in the same statistical area, and it seems like a pretty high bar in Newport. Um, is there, I mean, are there a number of people in those statistical areas that own 20 units or more?
Yes, uh, again, the direction came from city council, but we did take a look at, you know, a number of properties within those mixed-use districts and then there's appear to be, you know, larger developments that have, uh, a single owner within one project and then there is a number of property owners that own multiple- then there is a number of property owners that own multiple properties within these mixed-use districts.
I mean, I guess I understand the desire to limit the number of people you have to work with. I get that. It just, again, 20 seems like a pretty high bar, but if that's, but that was, came from city council?
Yes.
And then the only other question was just the two-year of inactivity. That also seems like a long time of, you know, no revenue coming into the city from an inactive short-term lodging user. Is that another, something that came from someplace else? Could that be discussed and maybe chop that down to a year, or is that, I'm just, kind of, they're questions.
So Commissioner Salina, I'll address that. So back when we adopted short-term lodging regulations, the council formed an ad hoc subcommittee of council members, and this is one of the recommendations that came out of that. At the time, our revenue division said that there are a lot of property owners that held short-term lodging permits and then never used it. So the ad hoc committee said, we'll just give them the two years to utilize it or not, and that's what got adopted in the code.
Okay, so that was, as long as that was discussed?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any other questions, comments for that, for staff? Move it on to any ex parte communications?
I spoke with landowners in the multi-use zones, a few of them.
I also spoke with landowners in the zone.
As did I. Okay, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
Secretary Harris and members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. First, I thank you for managing to make some sense out of my fairly incoherent comment on the previous item. My comment on this one, I think you have to actually, like, you had to read that missing page on the previous item. In my written comment, I put here the actual direction to you from the council, which was given without any discussion. So it's somewhat of a mystery what they're asking for, and I would point out that they're asking you to make recommendations to facilitate new visitor-serving accommodation opportunities in these two zones for multi-unit residential developments with 20 or more residential units, which is rather different than what you heard from the staff. Staff is saying there's some kind of eligibility requirement that you have to own one unit here or one unit there, and they have to add up to 20, that that is not what this says. It says new opportunities for a residential development with 20 or more units in it. And the staff is guessing the answer to this mystery is that the council was wanting more short-term lodging permits. But a more logical guess as to what the answer to the mystery is, is they may have wanted to relax our requirement on timeshare uses because, and there's a historical reason for why this 20-unit number may have come up. Our city back in 1982 banned timeshare uses, which are a visitor-serving use, anywhere in Newport Beach, and the reason for that ban was the planning commission had entertained an application for a 20-unit timeshare use, which is in the Lido Village area. It was at 336 via Lido, which is a little strip between the village and the Lido Bridge on the waterfront. And people at the time did not want that at all. So they were, first they were banned, and then a few years later, they were allowed, but only in complexes of 100 units or more. So it's possible what the council is wanting is a relaxation of that requirement from 100 units down to 20, which also would make more sense because a timeshare to be approved has to provide professional management, amenities, and so forth, so perhaps they were wanting a relaxation of that. Assuming that I'm wrong, and what you want is a correction of short-term lodging permits and make them available, why would we have this rule about 20 units? It makes no sense to me. Why would it only be in these two specific districts and not elsewhere? And why would we have separate limits for District 75 here and something different? The staff report says there was just some inadvertent, my time is up. I think I explained in writing, the staff is operating on the premise that the council is wanting us to correct an inadvertent omission of saying that these were eligible for short-term lodgings. If so, if it was just correct and inadvertent change, why limit it to these two districts? Why not MUV, which is in Baobab Village? Why not MUMM, which is in same properties on Mariners Mile? This interpretation doesn't make sense to me. So I'm not sure that this is even what the council wanted you to come back with. But why those would have a separate 75-unit thing from the other timeshares also does not make sense, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Next speaker.
Denise Oberman, secretary and commissioners. I wrote in, so I don't need to be completely redundant, assuming that you read what I wrote. I think that this concept is a fabulous concept, and it's long overdue in our city to begin. And my understanding and the community's understanding of this concept is that we're working on creating visitor-serving opportunities and specifically short-term lodging here, and there's an effort to transition the short-term lodging from the residential zones where there's a lot of impact and it detracts from our ability to provide sufficient housing stock and move it over to commercial zones, namely mixed-use has been identified. Completely agree with Jim. I mean, why does the commission have to limit its thinking just to these specific mixed-use areas? I mean, it makes only logical sense that this concept extend into the other mixed-use area. Doesn't cost a lot of money to do that and certainly makes great planning sense. I do have a question about the transition. So the community has a significant concern that this is going to be an additive thing, and then, well, maybe we'll, through some unspecified attrition level and attrition period, that it's somehow going to even out in the wash, so we still end up with no more than 1,550 total units. So we would really, and I would really like to see there be a more specific plan. Staff has mentioned some things, inactive STLs being closed either immediately or more rapidly, revise the allowed to, unlimited to one time. There are probably some other things, but I would ask the commission to look for a specific plan from staff so that as, so that it isn't just adding 75 units or potentially more, but what is the plan to bleed down, if you will? I'm sorry, it's late. I'm not thinking of the proper terminology. But how are we going to make that transition such that the short-term units are, go out of the residential areas in a timeframe corresponding to when units are added in the mixed-use zones? So there does need to be some plan for that. It sounds, it's a little bit squishy based on what we've heard, and I would like to know, I would like to know something in terms of a quantitative target based on those actions, whether it's the two that staff mentioned, or it's an addition of others. How many units does the staff anticipate can be reallocated through some attrition or enforcement process, change in the regulatory process for units in the residential zones? And how quickly can that go? Can I have another half a minute just to address the management plan? Relative to the issue on parking, there is some language in the code that says parking does need to provide, be provided on-site or within close proximity. And I'm here to tell you that there isn't any such thing as close proximity. You're smiling. In the impacted area. And the coastal commission would be more than happy to see the city of Newport actually move towards a reduction in the short-term lodging units in residential zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Does staff have any comments for the record?
Yes, just to speak to Ms. Oberman's comments about the plan for transition. So it would be two separate caps with two separate waiting lists. So if adopted, any property owner that wishes to secure permit within the mixed-use zones would be able to do so immediately. So there may be a short, I don't know exactly how long, but there may be an interim period where there may be more than 1,550 permits as we wait for the residential cap and total number of permits to come down through attrition. But again, we don't anticipate that the 75 permits within the mixed-use districts would be, you know, secured right away. So there's going to be a transition period.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anything you guys want to add? That's her. Commissioner Lowry?
Walk me through the 20. So one person has to have 20, the way I'm reading this, has to own 20 or more? So a guy that are, just one person couldn't, they have one unit, they couldn't participate in this? Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, well, did we close the public hearing? Are we closed? I just, before I say something, I just.
We did.
We did, okay.
Do you want me to reopen?
No, I don't want you to, I was just going to say that. I can't. I love this proposal. Yeah, I love this proposal, but I won't vote for this because of that. You're excluding so many people, that's.
Was it one property or one person? An owner? I can't remember.
One owner would have to own 20 units under common ownership, so.
Right, yeah. So.
I mean, correct, staff, the intention of that is, you know, you're in commercial areas where there might be high density, correct? And that is the housing stock oftentimes is one, you know, building with a lot of units, and it's almost a replacement for a hotel in a way that's never going to get built or something to that effect? Is that kind of the intention behind it, or can you speak on that?
So our direction came from the city council as an A1 item. If you don't agree with this, it's totally fine. You're just making a recommendation to the council. If you want to make a motion and make a different recommendation, that's going to approve you. And if you think differently, then go ahead and do that.
I agree. I mean, I just had to ask for our recommendation. It just seems like it's excluding a lot of people, and I don't see the logic behind that at all.
I was just going to say, I agree with you. I mean, I think that, I don't know how many people there are out there in that particular area that own 20 units, but there's a lot more, you know, little guys who would like to do this and participate in this program who should be allowed to do that, I think.
So my understanding is that, from the idea of at least having more than a small number, obviously, there's a number of 20 that's been picked on the A1. My, I guess my understanding was the intent was that you have management of, you have professional management kind of accumulated associated with it. And I don't know if the idea was that at 20, you can justify having a professional manager managing it all at once. That was kind of my understanding going into it. Does that fit your guys' understanding?
That's the direction we were working under and kind of our understanding of Karen Ford and how we developed the code amendment. You know, there's the other component of required amenities, right? So if you have just one unit, there's not going to be really any amenities to provide. So part of that, that number is it's probably a larger project or someone who has a lot of units that's able to provide an amenity for those number of guests.
Something more than a fourplex, but less than a hotel. So that was kind of my impression going into it, seemed sensible, I guess, to me.
I guess to that point, I mean, what is considered an amenity?
So we've left it flexible. So as part of the management plan, they're going to submit to the community development department, and we would evaluate, you know, all the various components and eligibility requirements. So, you know, it could be, it could be bicycles, it could be swimming pools, a gym. We didn't want to be too prescriptive, just to be able to allow some flexibility.
Will the 75 units be available immediately or only after the, what is it, 1450, the other 1450?
Immediately once the, if the city council adopts it, and then the California Coastal Commission adopts it as well.
After coastal?
Yes.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion? Would you guys want to? Oh, sorry.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, I guess, if I may, real quick, just, Lee, is there a number that you like that less than 50 or less than 20, more than zero?
I would just say one. I just, I mean, just, I just can't, I, look, look. I'm, this is just my, I can't look at someone and say, well, you can't rent because you have one unit and someone has 20. So it's just a recommendation, and that's where I stand. So this is why we're here to purse thoughts on public record, and that's my thought and my.
Would you like to make a motion to send it forward without that section or to strike that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Again, I'll say I really, everything I love about it, except that one, yeah, I just, we'd like to, I love it, but it just, I want to lower the 20 to, I'd like to lower the 20 units requirement to one.
But just for clarification, and I'm sorry, can I? But they still would have to provide some sort of amenity that the city would have to approve. And again, it could be a bike and be professionally managed and all the remaining, all the other things stand plus.
Everything else would stay the same. We have a motion. Do we have a second, or do you want to bring it back open or counter?
No, I just wanted to discuss it, but, okay. I guess as I look at it, there's a number of issues that we've addressed with short-term housing, one of them being, excuse me, one of them being, of course, the residential nature of a neighborhood. But even in the mixed-use areas, when you have a, you know, fourplex and you just have random people cycling through it, I think that's a problem that we've all identified and agreed on. I think it's definitely not, at least it isn't my goal to bring that back and expand that, and I kind of feel like we're moving down that road by limiting it to one. And especially in relation to the direction from the council that, I don't think that's what they were asking for either, but obviously, I understand the point you're making that, hey, if you can rent, you can rent. I think that, at least the request from the council wasn't, let's just open up short-term rentals within, definitely the direction was not, if it's multi-use, you can do short-term rentals. The direction that I guess I'm trying to respond to is short-term rental with a very specific set of conditions, so as to keep it under control and not just go back to kind of the hodgepodge that we had before. I think that's why I would not be in favor of that, but.
My only counterargument to that is that the net number's not increasing, so you can have singled all the way up to the 1,500. So if we were increasing numbers, I'm with you, but we're not increasing numbers, it's all staying the same.
Yeah, I'm just trying to address what the council requested in A1.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second, or do we have a counter motion?
My Roberts rules are shaky, but I'm going to say that it, you normally let it drop without a second, and then I would make a separate motion rather than a counter motion. So I think.
If there's no second, then it'd just be a new motion.
So I'd make a motion to go back to the original recommendation to find the, you know, the recommendation under the agenda number three. I would make that motion. I would make that motion.
We can tie?
Okay.
We're just sending this to council, correct? They're going to change it how they want?
It is a recommendation.
I'll second, I'll second Brady's. Thank you.
All right.
So Title 20 and 21 recommend, it does require some action, so it would be very, very helpful if the body could come up with just something that we can come, have a meeting of the minds on.
Is there a number you'd like, David?
Would five work, two? Does it matter? Look, do we have to bring you back to the floor? I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I mean, if you want to make a new motion, then that would be appropriate here.
I'll just, I'll make a motion back to the minimum of one. Fair enough.
Motion carries 3-1 with Commissioner Bartow voting no.
Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Murillo, again. This item is a number of municipal code amendments that are actually part of a larger set of amendments that the city council has directed various boards and commissions to analyze. The intent is to kind of delete or reduce excessive code language or sunset existing code provisions. The planning commission did develop an ad hoc committee to review various possible amendments in Title 19, Title 20, Title 21. And then they provided a number of recommendations to the planning commission that were presented on August 3rd. And so these amendments incorporate those various amendments. So quickly, I'll just go through the four recommendations. The first is to change the tentative map review process to eliminate the need for a public hearing for very routine parcel maps involving the allowance to subdivide the airspace within existing or proposed units into condominiums. The second amendment is related to the bluff overlay district. There's a number of conflicts between the overlay regulations within Title 20, which is their zoning code, and Title 21, which is our LCP implementation plan. And so the amendment would delete the inconsistent overlays within Title 20. Third item is related to the takeout service fast casual use. The current provisions in the code require minor use permit when a takeout service restaurant is within 500 feet, regardless of hours, to residential use, and so that is to reduce it to 100 feet. And then the fourth component is deleting provisions related to the conversion and demolition of affordable housing. These are inapplicable to the city, based on the eligibility requirements that we have less than 50 acres of privately-owned land that is vacant and available for residential development within the coastal zone or three miles within. So we's going to delete that from the code. If it ever becomes applicable, it's still state law and it would still be required. And then there is a couple, or a few additional amendments that I just want to point out. There's a number of cleanups to code references to the Newport Beach Municipal Code and state law throughout the various amendments. There's outdated definitions, or I'm sorry, references to the community development director. Currently, it states either building director or planning director, but we're now one department. There's a minor cleanup related to the reasonable accommodations review process, so there's conflicting provisions of the review authority for appeals, and so these amendments would clean that up. And then lastly, there's one additional change to the requirements for alcohol sales, off-sales, so these would be for like liquor stores. Currently, regardless of hours, they're allowed to be reviewed by the zoning administrator through a minor use permit. The change would be to elevate that review authority to the planning commission with a conditional use permit if that facility has late hours. And so that concludes my presentation on this item.
Thanks, I mean, any questions for staff?
Yeah, like everything here, just on the condo, is there a limit in condos? I mean, I, we're going to get 100 condo projects, but I'm just saying if that came up, is there, I didn't see it in there, and it doesn't sway me one way or the other, but just, is there any limit on what that tentative map would require a public hearing if someone came in with 100 condos or something like that?
Yeah, so this kind of streamlining provision would only be applicable to parcel maps of four units or less.
Any other questions? No. Any ex parte communication? None? None?
None.
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 Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the audience want to comment?
Secretary Harris, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. As the staff report said, this is part of a bigger effort, and in fact, the council has announced the next Tuesday at a study session, they're reviewing a 400 and some pages of redlining to the municipal code. I thought those are just the redline parts of it. I assume, but I haven't looked at those 400 and plus pages yet, I assume this is part The mandate and what they're reviewing supposedly was updating, deleting, reducing language. Some of this seemed, of what I heard in the presentation, seemed not exactly that, but close to it, I guess. It was helpful in the presentation to see why we're deleting entire chapters having to do with demolition of affordable housing. It would have been even more helpful specifically where that rule came from, that we don't need this, so that we would have comfort we're not eliminating something that still has some use. I take it the staff presentation is correct, but I don't know because I didn't, there was not a clear reference to where that 50-acre thing came from. Regarding eliminating the bluff overlay districts from Title 20, I have a slight concern about They're going to be left in Title 21, which is the coastal plan implementation. However, there's an odd thing that some of the properties that are in the bluff overlay zone that is supposed to have protects, special protection are what are called in the categorical exclusion area of Title 21, which means they don't need coastal development permits. And in theory, to be excluded, they have to abide by all the conditions which would mean that, but I'm concerned, those properties, if the rules about the bluff overlay, this is specifically Irvine Terrace, the houses along the bluff top there above Bayside Road are in the categorical exclusion area. So if the staff looks only at Title 20, the normal zoning code, they might, seeing that it's excluded from the coastal act supposedly, they might not bother to look in Title 21 and see that. So I have a slight concern about that. But otherwise, this is too much for me to comment on at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesher. Seeing no other speakers, staff, any comments?
My only comment is on the bluff overlay change. You know, we drafted the bluff overlay and put it in the zoning code back in 2010. When we, when we went to the coastal commission for its review for the applicability in coastal zone, they made changes to it. So the two overlays in two different titles are different. So what we're doing is eliminating the less restrictive overlays out of Title 21, I'm sorry, Title 20. There is one overlay district that's actually not in the coastal zone, that would actually stay in Title 20. I'm not concerned, as Mr. Mosher is, that staff will overlook those regulations in Title 21 because they're not in Title 20, as they're reviewing a development permit for consistency with the LCP and consistency with the categorical exclusion. I'm not concerned with that at all. Our team is trained to obviously look at that title. And this is really critical for me, because if somebody reads Title 21, they might get the wrong answer, and we have to get rid of that.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Comments or motion?
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation under, for item number four.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the next item. Number eight, staff and commissioner items, item number five, motion for consideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Item number, seeing none, I'll move on to the next item. Item number six, report by the community development director, a request for matters which a planning commissioner, commission member would like to be placed on a future agenda. Director's report, please.
I'll be brief on this, given the lateness of the hour. I just want to remind the commission, we've got a couple meetings up here before the end of the year. November 9th is our next meeting, and we really have one item on that agenda, and it's the appeal of the Dawson residence. It's a complicated case for a house on Ocean Boulevard, so we'll have a hearing for that item. If we could find another agenda item for that meeting, I'll add it, but I, it will be meaningful only one item, which, again, I don't particularly care to do, but I don't, I really don't want to have that delayed an entire month because there is not a second meeting in November, because it would be Thanksgiving. So we're canceling a meeting, the second meeting of the month. So December 7th would be the next planning commission meeting. We have a full agenda that night, and then we do have two items that are slated, and one of those items will be the item you heard tonight, right? And then the last planning commission meeting of the year would be December 21st. It's getting a little close to the holidays. We do have two items that are lining up for that meeting. You know, if they slip, they'll obviously come in January, but I want to make sure everyone recognizes that we're looking at potentially two items in, at that late meeting of the year, and I'm hoping that will work for everyone. So fair warning, we do want to hold the meeting on the 21st. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? Nope. Okay. Item number seven, request for excused absences. Anyone? Or adjourned? 9:32.